Yes, sir. We will call this meeting into order at 7:34. Dr. Willard, if we could do the pledge?
Yes, sir. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord, with his just as for all.
All right. Now, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Let me welcome you to the December 9th Board of Education meeting. For those that are paying attention, I am not Ashley. I had her baby. We should congratulate her and her husband for a healthy young lady. Ms. Plort is under the weather today, so unfortunately she will not be attending either. So I would take the reins. I ask your forgiveness and your patience. I'll learn a couple of the aspects of this, but together I think we'll make it through just fine. Let's move on to Agenda Item B, the approval of the agenda. As Willett mentioned, I'm going to need a motion to add executive session to this agenda.
Jacob Mari, I move that we amend the agenda to add executive session for the purpose of discussing a confidential matter as Item P, moving adjournment down to Item Q.
Madhu and Nidhantala, second.
Any discussion? Okay, so if you can, as your name is called, if you can vote, I, nay, or abstain. Jacob?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Dr. Willard, if you noted, that motion passed with add executive session to the end for the purpose of discussing a confidential subject.
Yep.
Right, so approval of the minutes, November 18th, 2020 minutes. Can I get a motion to approve?
Rini B saw a motion to approve the minutes of the November 18th meeting, 2020.
Madhu and Nidhantala, second.
Right, any discussion? So if you can signify your preference by yea or nay or abstention, Jacob?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Motion passes. So Item C, or I apologize, Item D, public participation. Again, a reminder, a two-minute warning. Since things have shifted a bit, Jacob has offered to play the role of Jacob the timer. He will signify within, when you have 30 seconds left, again, please begin by stating your name and your address for the, for the minutes. If anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand and we will call upon you. Computer issue, I think, so Karen M?
Yes, can you guys hear me? Sorry.
It's been.
Karen Moran, 50 Merlot Way. I was very disappointed to see that the Communications Committee meeting was canceled tonight with no meeting since June due to one of the two-member committee out of the country and now with a co-chair structure in place. I think that someone could have run the meeting even with Dr. Willett's guidance. And understanding that Ms. Plort is out sick, as Ms. Sheik is co-chair, I would have thought that she's certainly a professional and quite capable of, of chairing the meeting for tonight, so I just wanted to share my disappointment with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, please raise your blue hand? Or Dr. Willard, what is it, star nine for those on the call?
Right, those on the phone, star nine, or the dot, dot, dot at the bottom of the Zoom screen will give you the option for raising hand.
Well, seeing no blue hands, we will close public participation. That brings us to correspondence. Okay, so we received an email complimenting the board on a well-run meeting. The board missed an opportunity, however, to respond to the students' comments specifically where it approached the subject of anxiety in the schools. An email asking for information on how to be a part of the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Task Force. Email offering information on religious, real information. Email asking if the 2021, 2022 school year start date was known yet. Email concerning IT security. An email asking if the Board of Education's fourth goal might be an appropriate place to actualize some of the ideas from Dr. Cooper's presentation. And an email complimenting Dr. Willett and the board for the Talk About Race and School presentation. Okay, so that brings us to points of information. If any of the board members wish to make a comment, please raise your hand. Sophia?
Yes, I just wanted to respond to Ms. Moran's comments and state that although I've served on a board before, I'm very new to this board and new to the Communications Committee, and it's been years since I've served on a board. So I definitely did not have time in, in the day-to-day to brush up on the Robert Tools on how to effectively run a committee meeting. So I, I'm sorry for her disappointment, but I felt that it was best for the committee that we have all the members present when it's run for me for the first time.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Dana, you raising your hand?
I'm raising both my blue and my very pink hand.
I saw the pink.
I would, I would like to, I know that Ashley's going to be out for an extended period of time and congratulations on her family and their newest additions, phenomenal. It's, everybody needs the bright shining star in this, this crazy year. So it's fantastic news to hear that everybody's happy and healthy. So I wish my best to Ashley and her family. What I'd like to propose, or somehow we put it on there, is with the committees, I think the Communication Committee is what, two, now three people? Is that correct? Or, because I know that the, I guess the reason why I'm bringing this up is because I know that because it was a two-person committee, I mean, if one person's out, you can't have the meeting. So if it's a three-person, I know FSC is four people. So 99.95% of the time, we can continue to have those meetings even if someone is vacant. So I don't know if that's something that we talk about, a lot, committee alignment, make sure that we at least have three people per committee so that we don't have to, to cancel ones. And I, I understand Ms. Moran's concern because, you know, Tony being the world traveler, we did, we did miss a lot of meetings for Communications. So I would really like us to, to try to, to get that meeting on the docket. And I get it, Sophia, it, it would have been one of your first-led meetings. So that's a tough situation to be put in. And I understand that Christina is not, not feeling well or, or what have you. So I just think that we need to address that so that we can, in fact, have all of our committees meet on a regular and consistent basis. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if anybody else wants to volunteer to be a part of the, the Communications Committee and let our leadership know so that we can get that back on track, just as a suggestion and a thought. I just figured I'd throw that out there.
Thank you, Dana. And I know from the communication I got from, from Ms. Plort earlier, you know, and what she was saying, it was only after speaking with Sophia that she decided to, to cancel. But it's my understanding that a reschedule is, is going to happen. But, but to your, to your broader point, I know speaking for a policy committee, we would be absolutely thrilled to have as many members as want to be on it. All of the committees have very important work that's going to be happening. And I, I think the meetings are important. So we, we will certainly do what we can to ensure that that, that continues forward. Anybody else? All right, Dana, your blue hand is still up. All right.
Coming down.
That moves us to a student representatives' report. Alexandra or Simone?
Yeah, I'll go first. Hi, everyone. We don't have that much today. So for Student Council, we decided to decorate the high school with winter decorations. And we're handing out Bravo Award, awards, which are kind of like certificates to recognize and appreciate what our teachers have been doing for us for the pandemic. And then Alexandra, if you want to continue.
I have a lot about NHS, which is National Honor Society. So at the high school, NHS is raising money to host a family for their holiday dinner. And then through NHS, teachers and students are raising money to collect gifts for the children for the holiday season. NHS is also continuing with Talon United Service Project, which takes place every Wednesday at noon. And it's a good way for all students, like even those that are not at the high school, to get engaged and have a good time doing activities such as crafts and trivia or something like that. And then NHS is still offering tutoring at the high school, which is always a good resource. And then lastly, I was at the budget meeting on Monday, and I just wanted to advocate for smaller class sizes next year. Due to the pandemic, many students are not progressing as fast as they used to, and smaller class sizes will hopefully allow teachers to get caught up next year. So that's, I think, all we have.
Hey, thank you both. And just one thought that came to mind as I was listening to your report and also, you know, going off of the correspondence that we have. I just want to remind you that as we're going through the, the topics and the conversations that we're going to have tonight, your position as student rep does give you the right to speak on those. So please feel free to, to raise your hand if you have thoughts or, or want to add to the conversation. Dr. Willard, that moves us into superintendent's report.
All right, thank you for everybody coming this evening. It's great to see such a, you know, great group of people coming. We have 37 tonight, which is awesome, and it's nice to see you here tonight. So starting off with the superintendent's report, we have five H items. The first H item is the coronavirus status report. Time to time, I put out information about where we are. You know, we did just enter the pandemic response education period four of, of nine this year. And so this is just going to constitute a, a basic update as to, as to where we are and what some of the prevalence is and so on. And also just give a very, very, very brief summary of some of the literature on there as well. And then, of course, in some points of information, if there are questions, I'll do my best to, to answer them. So just to start us off, I did update this. People will notice if they're looking at the board agenda that the board agenda has an update in the first data point up through 12-1. I did update it through 12-9. The rest of the information is the most recent that I could get from the other entities. So 12-9, right now, we have less than 1% of the population of the Talon Public Schools that has been identified as COVID-positive. Still, 99% have not been identified as positive. EHHD has, as you noted, in the last week or a couple of weeks leading up and through Thanksgiving, had an uptick, but we did see that number come down. I think that's mostly because of Yukon students starting to vacate that area. But, but it did show a tick downward in the, in the week there as it immediately followed the Thanksgiving break. Again, you'd kind of look at EHHD data, which is the Eastern Highland Health District. You know, these numbers do look pretty high, which tends to kind of drive alarm sometimes. But these are community numbers. And as I've described in some other information points I've put out, you know, there is a different, difference between town-level indicators and Connecticut school indicators. So these would be, you know, driven by town-level indicators and take into a broader context of the population at the town level. So there, you'll notice that they do tend to have, you know, some higher numbers, especially for towns that are, that are a little bit more sizable. So you can see that here, and you see that reflected here in their, in their regular reports. I do expect another report to be coming from EHHD fairly soon, but this was the most recent I could pull for now, at the time of the Board of Ed meeting. Sorry, I'm trying to make sure I'm letting people in. There we go. Thanks, thanks for the text, Bethany. So yeah, please always text me too if you're stuck in the outside waiting room. I'll keep letting people in as I see them. Okay, so also included here are the Connecticut school indicators. The latest update there goes through the 28th as well. As you can see, there are, the, the ones that are shaded out are the other towns in our region. Talon is still among one of the lowest for 14-day positivity. It's one of the lowest for 14-day hospitalization average for our area. And it's also among some of the lowest for hospitalizations per 100,000 in the 14-day average. So these data points are updated fairly regularly. Every time that they are updated, I post them to the superintendent's blog. And so, you know, for this particular report, you know, since we were doing one for the Board of Ed, I pulled information that you'll normally see on the blog, and I added it here too. So, you know, we will do regular updates as part of the Board of Ed items. And in this case, you can always find this information linked through the blog as well as other resources. So to kind of put a bookend on the brief report for today for H1, I also provided some of the literature that's out there, both popular media and otherwise. You know, there's always questions that come up, and I, I'll take any amount of time to answer them. People can call me, text me, or set appointments, and we'll talk to them. And I do, I'm, I'm text tagging with one of you out there, and you know who you are. So we'll set something up soon, and I'm sorry, I haven't been able to, to get us a, a meeting yet, but I will work that out. In any case, as you can see, you know, this kind of bookends it a little bit. Sometimes people say, but you know, is there any kind of literature on this? So I included some of the literature. This is by no means a full floral exploration. And people have to keep in mind that, you know, anything like this with, with a pandemic like this, it will be years before we actually have, you know, comprehensive data and really an in-depth knowledge of all of the different tentacles of this thing. But this does provide, this is a sampling of some of the literature that's there now. And, you know, as I said, also some popular references like 60 Minutes. So these are some of the things that, you know, that I turn to when I'm looking for information about it. You know, Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, 60 Minutes. The Atlantic is more of a popular culture one that's out there. The United Nations information. You know, just as an aside, the World Health Organization actually has a social distancing requirement of three feet, about 3.3. The reason why the CDC sets it longer, you know, or longer, the explanation I got for that was that it expects Americans to be more individualistic. You know, there's more of an individual liberty focus in America and that they, they generally felt that Americans wouldn't necessarily follow what's put, you know, what is out there. So they put a six-foot thing, six-foot, you know, we're basically requirement or suggestion, thinking that people would then do more, more or less half of that. And half of that is the World Health Organization's recommendation. So it's about three, 3.3 feet for the World Health Organization. In any case, additional literature here for people to kind of chew on, it does have, you know, various links in it that can also, that lead to more psychological information from the pediatric, you know, American Center of Pediatrics and other organizations. So it's put forward for people just to get a taste of it. There is a lot more literature, and I have pages and pages and pages of it. If people are interested, I can share more and more of that information. One thing that I would also like to throw out there, and then I'll kind of wrap up for this item, is that people will sometimes ask, sorry, I'm just checking to make sure no one's in the waiting room. Okay. People will sometimes ask, you know, how can, you know, how can anybody be sure exactly where this is being transmitted? And it's a reasonable question, and it arises from time to time. Essentially, the, the rationale for that is that, you know, they do and have had studies in literature that shows that things like PPE, face shields and other mitigations with the distancing, you know, proper sanitization and proper cleaning, things like that, has a very positive effect on reducing and diminishing the spread of the virus. And because school systems are awash in these mitigations, much, much, much more so than the community is in its, in its broader sense. The school systems are generally seen because of that as not being, you know, major spreaders. But, you know, as one kind of extrapolates and look at it, looks at it, it's also a result of the investigations. When these investigations are being done and calls being made and contacts are being made and so on, it does start to become pretty clear that something like a, a sleepover, where maybe 10 kids were part of a sleepover or a fire pit party or whatever. You know, we are seeing that if you have, for example, 20 kids at a fire pit party, it tends to be that like 10 of those kids or, or 12 or whatever, or 15 tend to end up being effective, you know, they're, they're positive in some way. And we're seeing that across the state. That's the kind of thing that people are seeing when they investigate it. In comparison, when you do the, you know, follow-ups, a lot of times, you know, when we quarantine, we do it in a very proactive manner. It's done to the T, to the, to the, you know, to the directive, to the requirement of the Eastern Highland Health District and the Department of Public Health. And we put the, the children in a status of, or even staff, in a 14-day quarantine. And the way that that typically ends up being done, a number of people end up being in a quarantine situation if they were closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes. If every one of those individuals ended up being COVID-positive, we would have hundreds and, and hundreds of people that were COVID-positive right now. Similar to when things happen in a party or a fire pit or some kids come out of certain places at Yukon, a very, very large number, because they're not wearing masks and they don't have those mitigations, tend to become COVID-positive pretty, pretty regularly, seven to 14 days after that party. But in contrast, for school systems, the number of people that have been identified as COVID-positive have had nowhere near the number of transmission cases that has happened, say, at those parties or at a fire pit or at a sleepover. In, in contrast, you know, if we did, if it had the same dynamic going on, we, we would have hundreds and hundreds. And right now, we don't. We have less than 1%. 99% of, of the population has not had it. Right now, 20, you know, I would say maybe in the, somewhere in that 15 to 20 zone. And it depends sometimes, because sometimes the people that I get to identify as having it are completely remote. They actually have not set foot in the school. So, you know, the number here of, of less than 1%, you know, it does include some of those people that have actually not even been in the school, but they are part of our school community, so to speak. So we have a, a very, very low prevalence at this time of, of the coronavirus within the school setting being transmitted. So that's, that's more or less in a nutshell why and how we're able to operate the way we are with the precautions that we are. And knowing that, you know, providing the opportunity for children to be in school means that they're actually screened more often. You know, there are more eyes on them, the nurses see them. There are 10 to 12 medical professionals working within our district that can, you know, that screen the children. And so we're not only able to screen them for things like the coronavirus, we catch a lot of other things as well. So in a number of ways, it actually is, is in, in many ways, a, a protection of children's health, both physical health as well as emotional and social emotional, to have them be in that four-day in-person model. Because we are able to screen them and see them much more often. And as a final point, typically as we enter the holiday season, you know, some families, they have that great privilege and benefit of, of having a circumstance during the, you know, this particular time of year where there is a lot of support, but there are other people at this time, you know, that struggle at this time of year for a variety of reasons. And so people that work in schools, you know, as we get closer to the holidays, you know, we do also see an uptick in, in people sometimes feeling sadness and feeling isolation and feeling, you know, all kinds of, you know, sometimes hardships. And if we weren't able to have them in person, not only would the typical hardships that are existing right now because of COVID be in play, we wouldn't be able to identify and, and really help, you know, children and older students who tend to struggle at this time of year anyway. So this would be one of the worst time of years to go into that, you know, go into a completely remote model unless we absolutely had to. And there may come a point in time where the, you know, in a kind of looking at the balancing of cost-benefit here, you know, where are people getting hurt the most? There may be a point where that scale tips in the direction of us having to go remote more full-time than we are or remote completely. And if that happens, then we're definitely going to do it because it will have, you know, reached a point that there's more people being hurt by not doing it than by doing it. But where we are right now, if we did not have the children in front of us, if we were not able to do the things that we are able to do by having them in person, there would be a lot of, a lot of people getting hurt because of that. So it, it's, it is a balancing act. It's certainly something that people have very strong feelings about, which I completely respect. Anybody that does want to go remote, we're being very flexible with that. You can fill out an exception form and, and be, you know, request that and go on the remote status. So, you know, we'll, we'll work in every way we can to provide the best options for the families that they feel that they need. And this community has been fantastic. As we enter the holidays, people have responded. If they're going to have a lot of family interactions, if they know there's going to be a lot of, you know, mixing of populations, many families have chosen to do the remote learning for, for the span of time of the holidays. And that, that, that is a respectable thing to do, you know, knowing that that's going to be a situation and not wanting it to impact the school adversely. People have done that, and I, I thank the community for that. The community has been a great partner. And, you know, and I trust, I trust the parents and guardians of this community to make the choice that is right for them. I would say one last piece here that it's natural, you know, human psychology, the availability heuristic, also kind of known as availability bias. You know, when we're, when we are confronted on a daily basis with, you know, immediate examples of, of constant, constant imagery of, you know, the numbers and, and the, and the, you know, the things we see on the news, it sometimes, you know, we get to a point where we believe that applies ubiquitously to every single location in the same exact way. And, you know, what they're seeing in some areas of the United States right now is truly, truly, you know, a major concern, and even in Connecticut. But locally for our school, again, we still have not reached that point in time where the, the, you know, the benefit of being remote balances out the costs of that to these families and to these children. So while there are things in the news that are definitely concerning, you know, we locally, at that local and school community level, are not at that point where, where that would be, you know, really advisable to, to isolate people in that way. So that's where we are right now. I certainly realize that people may not agree with that assessment of it. But, you know, I've been given that sort of burden of, of day-to-day making that kind of determination, working with the experts to, to look at that, working closely with DPH and EHHD, and working closely with the community stakeholders and people that, you know, where we constantly review the information with. And every Friday and as well as many times a week, we have meetings on this. So, you know, I do, I do have a, a, a great opportunity to receive a lot of information about it. And I assure you that we're using that information every day, every minute of every day to do everything we can to keep everybody safe and supported in the ways that it is important to them. So I'll just end it there for H1. And now I... And now I, I hand that over to the chair. If you'd like me to move on to H2, we can do that. I don't know if any of the board members have any questions.
Just a second, because I want to give the board a chance to make some, to make comments if they'd like. But I certainly would, would like to echo, you know, some of the things that you said there, Dr. Willitt, and especially draw attention to the fact that, you know, it, it's only through the Herculean efforts of our district, combined with the absolutely amazing activities that the, the parents and neighbors of Tallinn have put together that keep us in the position where we can see graphs like this, where we can say that in the midst of everything that's going on, we are keeping our numbers low, we are keeping the opportunities available there for parents to make decisions. And, you know, personally, I want to, to voice my appreciation, not only for the activities that your staff is having to do to keep it running, but also for providing the information on these avenues. That one of the dangers that we have out there is the misinformation and everything running around. So being able to point and say, here's a website or here's a blog or here's how you communicate and get this data, I think, pays dividends. So that being said, Christine, looks like you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Tony. Dr. Willitt, I really just wanted to give a quick thanks to you and your entire staff. I, I know just from the couple of meetings you and I have had, you're constantly doing all this research, talking to health departments, figuring all this out. So I just really wanted to thank you and your staff for everything you've done to keep the kids in school four days a week. Cause I, I do definitely think that that's a huge benefit to have them with as much face-to-face time that they can get. And I know it's been a lot of work for you, so I just really just wanted to thank you for, for all the work you've done. And I hope you'll get a little bit of a break over the holidays to relax a little bit on that. But again, just thank you for all the work you've, you've done.
Okay, Madhu?
Thank you again, Dr. Willitt. I, we appreciate your efforts. I did have a couple of questions for me, or for you. One of the, one of the questions that I had, it seems like there's no data that suggests that there's spread in schools. It's all outside of school activities is where we're starting, is where we're seeing the, the spread coming from. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say that it's, it's not zero data, but that, that they, they're noticing that the vast majority is not from within the school setting. And I'm speaking more, most generally of, you know, as they're looking at it broadly across the state and, and country, the most, and even internationally, the literature generally points to the fact, you know, that, or generally points to the, the prevalence of this being spread, you know, almost, well, significantly outside of the school context and not, not typically within it.
Okay. And then during the track meetings in, in the summer, you know, we had guidelines that you'd set forth that would dictate, you know, if we were going to do in-person or if we're going to be forced to, you know, remote. Have you, have you adhered to that or have, have we adjusted based on available updated data?
Yeah, you know, that is one of the most complex aspects of this because the state has pivoted and, and as the situation has evolved, the, the sophistication and the way that this has been viewed has increased. So, you know, if we go back to March even, the way that America and the health departments in the United States were dealing with pandemics was, was set based on, you know, SARS and certain other things that had occurred prior to that. And it had certain ratings and certain ways of doing it. For instance, one of the most early ones was that, you know, you wouldn't shut down schools until 10% of your population was infected or even, you know, 5% of your population was infected. And, and those were, was, those were standards that, that people would write pandemic response plans to. And that was before any of this happened. There were some of these plans that, that had those kind of thresholds. And of course, at 10%, we would be talking about 200, you know, children in, in Tallinn. So they've, they've had to evolve how they looked at it and they've continued to do that. In fact, it wasn't until two or three weeks ago that the town level indicators came out. And, you know, even when they talk about the town level indicators, they've always juxtaposed that to the Connecticut school indicators. And, you know, they will use terminology like less in-person schooling, you know. And as have evolved, how they look at it and the charts they're using, they don't typically go to full remote anywhere. They will say things like less in-person, more in-person. And you'll notice that the governor and the commissioner of education and even the calls in the DPH, you know, they, they consistently talk about how important it is to keep children in-person in school, you know, to the greatest extent possible. And, and the reason for that is because they've really started to notice the, the cost, the true medical, physical and, you know, social emotional cost of not doing that. And so it has evolved and changed. So the standards that the state was using, you know, six months ago, even three months ago, even two weeks ago is different than what they're using now. So that has changed and, you know, we, we don't jump straight to a closure based on, say, community prevalence. That is a, an older model and, and that is something that, to some extent, we did speak to earlier where we said, while there may be a, a school prevalence or a community prevalence, it really has to be a, a review of what is happening within our schools. So even if the community prevalence is very, very low, if within a certain school district that goes skyrocketing high, you can close the school district even if the community was doing okay. And similarly, a community might be in the red or in this case, you know, red or orange because of town level indicators that are fairly new, but a school system can stay in operation. So it really has pivoted and evolved and we have to update the information. And then one of the latest updates on that is as late as, you know, November 17th to 20th. So I do have some updating to do of our current plan. In the addendum, they have many, 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 many addendum and they keep doing more addendum. So that, you know, I have to update to the, to the highest number of addendum they have as well. So yeah, it just keeps kind of evolving as they get to understand things more.
No, that makes sense. That makes sense. As, as data comes out, I mean, you, you have to evolve. I, I do have one last question. You know, have we, have we given any thought of soliciting the, the input of parents when it comes time to do the next offering? Like either, you know, like in-person or not in-person, you know, remote?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good board discussion and what the board wants to do, of course, I'll do. I, I do get the, the great advantage of, you know, I do put the cell phone out there. You know, I have regular communication, people texting, calling. I, I feel like I have a pretty good handle on what people are feeling, you know, as, every day as the days progress, both good and bad, both frustration and, and thanks, you know. I think it's a, you know, people are feeling very free to, to express their, their thoughts, feelings. Sometimes people like to do it privately because they have some struggles and other people are happy just putting it all out there. I think that, you know, whatever the board likes me to, would like me to do, I'll do. I, I do feel like we have a pretty good sense of things, but I also, I also feel a little trepidatious in that, you know, the, the availability heuristic is a, is a natural human inclination. And sometimes if, if, if a survey I put out happened, just happens to follow and drop on a day that CNN, NBC, or whatever else happens to be covering some kind of 60-minute, you know, documentary about how horrible things are in Texas, generally people will watch something like that and respond, you know, in a, in a way that they might not have responded to had that not been part of their exposure that night, you know. So part of my job, part of my role is to, you know, to have both that great privilege and benefit of being and having access to the DPH meetings, having access directly to the director of the Eastern Highland Health District, and have the privilege of, you know, serving the community on a daily basis with tracing and so on. I have that privilege and benefit. And what that provides is a, a perspective that, you know, that, that, that really I, I think helps inform the approach the district is taking. And so sometimes I, I would be, I would be a little wary of, say, going on strict popular opinion because what might happen there, which generally does, is people are really, really split. It's either a 40/50 or a 50/50, you know, like a 40, 40/60. It's really, really split. And so, you know, I, I generally will, not generally, I will always make decisions based on safety and based on what the DPH, EHHD experts are saying and what the data is saying. And I've said to others, you know, I would have my children, you know, in the schools. There is a point in, in time where that might not be the case for me. And that's the same for other parents out there. And, you know, I completely respect when a parent wants to initiate the, you know, that exception process, or even when they want to register them in the once-a-month registration. They can go into remote, you know, once a month when we open it up and open up the ad options. They can also file for an exception and go remote somewhere in the middle. And I respect that. That's every parent's right. And the state has provided that, you know, that option. And, and, and as a parent, I may avail myself of it as well with my kids at a certain point in time here. And I think that that is available to everyone all the time. But I also have to be really, really, you know, sensitive to a lot of the other families that I'm hearing from where, you know, they really, they aren't in a position where that is a, a option that they can entertain. And again, you know, that's why I just have to weigh out where that happens. And, you know, it may come to a point where the cost of it is going to outweigh the benefit of, of doing what we're doing. And, and we will then have to go remote regardless of, of everyone's personal circumstances. But we are going to try to, you know, go as far as we can and not because we're trying to push the envelope. It's because the benefit of doing so outweighs, it is the safer thing to do at this time.
You know, again, I just wanted to thank you and your staff for your Herculean efforts. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't echo the, the thoughts of our student representatives. And I also hope for smaller class sizes, so.
Oh, yes, I can.
Thank you.
I do want to just take one other moment that it's, it is the staff, the teachers, the paras, the nurses, the, you know, the, the custodians, the admin, they, they are truly, truly working, you know, amazingly hard. To me, they're right up there with anyone else on the front lines here, and I think they deserve everyone's credit. And you know, the way that you, that people can thank them, the way that people can thank them is, you know, when we drive by a bus stop on the way in in the morning, let, you know, thank them by, you know, just reminding the kids to wear the, wear the PPE. You know, sometimes there's, it's tough, you know, when you're driving in and you're taking that, you know, that risk for America, for Tallinn. If you drive by a bus stop and six to seven out of the nine kids are not wearing masks or something like that, and I'm not saying that's something I've seen in Tallinn, I'm just saying, if that's kind, that kind of thing, that's really demoralizing, you know, that's kind of like, you know, they're putting themselves out there. So one of the ways that we can say thank you beyond just, you know, say words, and they deserve it, not me, is, is to just make sure, you know, to the greatest extent possible that are, you know, that everybody's pulling and doing everything in, in the direction of helping each other. And, and that's, you know, kind of an example of a way to do it.
Okay, Dana, looks like your hand is up?
Yes, thank you, Tony. First of all, thank you, Dr. Willitt, for this COVID presentation. I know this has been difficult subject matter for all. And I thank you for, you know, advising us, especially with, with all the different resources that you've reached out to. And, and you've provided us some excellent document, documentation and information from across the globe, really. So that's fantastic. The more that we continue to educate ourselves on this pandemic and this virus, the, the better that we are as united front to, to do what we need to do to fight it. And just quickly to make a comment in regards to the masks is remember the mask isn't protecting you. The mask is protecting the person across from you. So that's so important. To echo something that, you know, our student reps said last meeting, I believe it was. I think something that we need to be really cognizant is of the mental health of, of especially our, I mean, of all of our students and all of our staff, but especially our oldest young adults, our, our high school students, because there are some opportunity for them to make their own decisions. And I know that many of us, when we were young adults, probably didn't make the appropriate decisions at certain times, but we were also not faced with the global pandemic where it can be life or death. It can be severe illness. It can be different things. So Alexandra and Simra, I hear you. Please don't hesitate to reach out. There's plenty of resources. I don't want to volunteer. You know, Dr. Willitt does have plenty of resources. Please don't hesitate to reach out to him. Please don't hesitate to reach out to any of the board members, any of your counselors, your guidance counselors, you know, friends and family. Because your mental health, everyone's mental health is so important, especially at this time. We need to 150% rely on each other to get through this. And there's many reasons why a lot of people moved to Tallinn. And I think that no matter what differences people have or what feelings people have and everything, the, the end, the end of the game, in the end, what's the word I want to say, at the end of the day, we're here for each other. And so, you know, that really struck a chord, ladies, when you said that. And I definitely want you to know that you and your peers are heard and don't hesitate to reach out at any time. On another note, Dr. Willitt, I just wanted to thank you and your staff, you know, the teachers, the nurses, the custodial staff, the administrators, you know, the principals and everyone, from the folks that helped the kids at Birch Grove get out of their parents' vehicle to the bus, to the bus drivers and everything. I mean, again, everything that everybody is doing is beyond phenomenal. I know that this isn't a perfect situation for anybody, for folks at home, for folks in partial, or for folks in, in school four days a week, what have you. It's, it's, it's not perfect for anybody. And I know that you're, I trust in the fact that you're doing what you feel is best and the safest based on the data and the information that you've been provided for the families of talent. And I, and I respect the fact that each family makes their own choice for their personal situation. I mean, I know families that have some kids in school and some kids not in school, some, remote in the same household, simply because that's what works. And so thank you for being so flexible and your staff for being so flexible and working with those families. It's very important. There's a couple of things that I wanted to say, that I was reading some of your sample literature. And one thing that kind of stood out at me was the social distancing recommendation from the World Health Organization is about 3.3 feet. Now, originally it was six feet and I, I heard what you said, I said, but my concern would be places like TIS, where we still can't in certain areas do two feet. So, you know, I don't know what we're doing to combat that and to try to uphold that 3.3 that we've been updated with.
Well, and, and, and keep in mind, you know, in, in all of this is, is so hard to parse through, but typically the social distancing is set down with an understanding that, you know, that if you're using other mitigation methods such as, you know, PPE, the, the masks, the, the, you know, the shields, the sanitizers, the, you know, modified schedules, modified cafeteria structures, you know, most of the most vulnerable moments of our kids' days, they, they have many, many mitigations in place. And even at that elementary level where they do have lunches in the calf, those lunches are spread out at six feet or more. So even though in certain areas it is, isn't, but others where they're most vulnerable, say during that span of, say, lunchtime, they are. And of course, you know, at the middle and high level, they, they don't actually have lunch in this context at this point. So it's, you know, the, the school system, that plus the, the cleaning days and, and on Wednesdays and so on, has, has taken so many, many precautionary steps that an organization like the Department of Public Health would say, you know, yes, they, while they are going to sometimes be in that zone of social distance, it's a little closer than, say, we would want. They have these many other mitigation factors in play. So we, we find it acceptable that they, you know, continue with as much in-person learning as possible. And that's, that's generally, I'm kind of truncating it, but that's generally the message, you know, that we get.
I know that that's always been a concern, it's something that's been a concern from day one, the, the size specifically of Birch Grove and TIS and the spacing. Again, I know that Mr. Danine and his staff are doing a phenomenal job to try to keep it that way. And again, I just want to say thank you for, for all the information that you've provided. Again, it's helping guide me, both on a personal family level, but also on Board of Ed level. So I'm appreciative. And please, for your staff and educators that are at home not watching this because they probably need to shut it down at night, please send my best and my thanks.
Of course. Thank you.
All right. Hands, Dr. Willitt, let's move on to H2.
Okay. H2 is the monthly financial report. As the board knows, we, we do this report at the beginning meeting of each month. Typically, the first meeting of each month. I'll just give you a basic, you know, you can read most of it. I'm not going to read the whole thing to, to the board. But, you know, the November 2020 financial report shows an available balance of about $1.4 million, about 3.54% of the budget. You know, it obviously reduces over the span of the next few months. November is still fairly early within our academic year, so I'm just going to give you some highlights on it. You know, instead of reading course verbatim, salaries, salaries are currently under budget. You know, we'll continue to do additional hiring of teachers and paras. You know, we'll continue to do additional hiring of teachers and paras. The current available balance is about 308,000. The balance will fluctuate during the pandemic, depending on the need. And, you know, we still do have, uh, some people that, um, you know, that had left and made decisions to, to do other things, which completely understand, um, or take leaves of absence without pay. So, um, then we, we do have, uh, you know, we do have an under budget situation in salaries. And we'll just have to see how it works out by the end of the year, because we may have to, you know, make some other expenses that we didn't expect, um, because of COVID. So as of November, you know, we're 308 under budget in that area. Substitute available balance is about 279 under, um, not a lot of, not as many subs this year. But at the same time, uh, as we enter November now, we do have more and more people signing up. And we also have, uh, because of the state's new rule, we don't have to limit it to people that have a college degree anymore. So that is, uh, that opens up, uh, some other opportunities. So we do expect to see, um, more people engaging in that way and we'll probably have, um, more usage of it. November is still fairly early, you know, it's only about three months in, so we haven't really hit the heavy, heavy months yet. Of course, remote status would affect such a thing, but, uh, you know, we just don't know what will happen in the next few months. And, um, you know, to expect that again, to be kind of fluctuating. Overtime expenses, uh, they can't be encumbered, so they're under budget of about 111. But, um, you know, we are engaging more and more in overtime. It's down by about 13K from last month. We, we will probably be burning through that more quickly as we get deeper into the winter. Uh, and we deal with the typical winters, um, and, and everything else that's on top of that. So we'll probably be going through some of the overtime. Stipends are over budget. A large reason for this is that pay to play, uh, has been reduced from 200 to 100 under the circumstances. You know, the athletic season, sports and offerings are not, not what they were. So charging the same amount for that is not something that we, we did, we charged less. Um, and so, you know, budget stipends have typically been encumbered into the year. Typically, they do run negative around this time anyway, and so that's not a new thing. But we may actually end the year, um, with, uh, less collected than, than, well, we will end the year with less collected than we normally do. And so I do expect that budget area to, to run, uh, over, because we're not collecting that, that money. We're not collecting as much. Health insurance severance, employee benefits, you know, they're about a under budget, but that also makes sense, because we have had fluctuations in staff, newly hired employees and retired employees and subscribers and so on. You know, those, uh, have retired since the beginning of the year. That does affect balances. So the available balance is about 133 under budget. And, you know, we do, that, we did have a lot, a lot of human fluctuation as we entered this year. And, um, this line will be under budget, probably just because of some of those factors as well. You know, retirement, course reimbursement, unemployment expenses, expenses are collectively under budget. There's an increase in unemployment due to the coronavirus. You can expect that. Um, there are more people that have made decisions that, um, you know, were, were decisions they had to make. So, you know, right now, we, we are seeing a little bit more in unemployment. And people are starting to file for degree changes and coursework. They're starting to take online courses. They have a lot of time, some people, because of, uh, you know, not being able to interact as much. So we do notice that more people are starting to enroll. Then we did already have one degree status, which is changed, which is pretty early in the year for that. So we, we anticipate more usage of that this year as people, um, you know, avail themselves of that. Benefits consultants, workers comp are about on target as expected. Legal audit and technology are collectively under budget, but legal, you know, legal, I think, uh, typically, we have two negotiations in this particular year, um, you know, and I think that will be impacting those legal expenses. On the numbers down by about 39,000 from last month, but I don't expect that to be, uh, some kind of trend here. We will probably be expending quite a bit of that as we enter, uh, additional negotiations, um, as the year goes on.
Repairman? Are you showing the chart or is it?
Uh, chart, it's, uh, it's just, uh, I'm just, uh, going from my notes based on the letter. I'm sorry, here's the, here's the, um, you're, I'm sorry, thanks for bringing that up. Hold on one sec. And of course it's sideways, so hold on one sec. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Can everybody see the, uh, the table now? Just light nods. Okay, that's good. Thank you. Thank you. So, um, picking up where I left off, repair, custodial, cleaning, um, you know, tech, technical expenses, that continue to be spent, obviously, as the year progresses, we're still in November, pretty early. Student transportation is over by 117. The majority of that is due to an additional out of district, uh, transportation, um, that we've had to accommodate. So that, that is something that we've had to adjust to. That may make, there may be other fluctuations in that as well. Special education tuitions are under budget as we start the year. You never know what will happen with that, um, but we, you know, as we know, we do have programs in district that are helping us with that type of thing. Energy expenses have been transferred to the, uh, Yusef account that we've talked about in the past. And textbooks, we're in November, we're still evaluating and there's still pilots going on in math. So they're under budget because expenses have not been made yet. But the curriculum supervisors will be spending that likely in the next couple of months as we finish up with some of the pilots. And they, uh, you know, they execute some of those POs that they just haven't had a chance to do yet. Instructional supplies, miscellaneous and general supplies, um, at this time of year, you know, we're, we're a little, we're under by 266, but we're in November, so that doesn't, and that doesn't really mean by the end that there's going to be much there. And we do have to do some supply expenditures for maybe some extra sets of manipulatives and so on. Because, um, you know, we don't want as much, as much sharing in certain areas, so that, that's going to probably be impacting that line. And let's see, you know, as you know, as we get the educational reserve funds in, it'll rebalance and restabilize some of the tech expenses that we, that we made in anticipation of that. So we do have, um, I think instructional equipment line is where they're, where they were taken out of. So that's going to be over budget by about 260,000 or 263,000, something. And that's, you know, that's also because we had encumbrances of about 310, anticipating that the ERF funds would be, uh, coming back in, that the board approved the use of. So we expect those to tag into the budget sometime in, in a fairly near future and balance that out. So I think that covers most of it for this month, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to report them and, um, and get some answers and share them at, you know, share them with the individuals or, uh, at the next FFC or the next meeting.
Dana, your hand is up. Is that a new question or comment?
I do have a question, but my hand was up since last time, so I'll defer my time to Jacob first and then put my hand back up.
Jacob.
Thank you, Dana. Um, real quick, so maybe I missed it, but with the count, um, 320 professional ed services. I just noticed there was quite a bit of a fluctuation from, uh, last, uh, month with the budget balance. I was just wondering if you expect that to kind of stabilize in the near future?
I do, um, that they, they do tend to, uh, to, to fluctuate because of our use of them. And especially during COVID, we're still reevaluating, you know, what we can and can't do, uh, the, and, and trying to find ways. For instance, people that we typically use for these services, they, they can't come in person. And, um, you know, we, we need to figure out and have been trying to figure out how to, to work that through. But, um, but we have encumbered, typically you'll see a line like that, um, because of an encumbrance, you know, go into a negative, that doesn't mean the entire amount has been spent. It's just making sure that, you know, we, we are encumbering enough to cover all potential, potentialities there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Dana.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Dr. Willett. We, we did go a lot of this with FFC, so, um, I think, uh, one of the things more, more so is a statement, that I think it's paramount that we, that we are, I mean, you're running a tight month-over-month budget, Dr. Willett, with the team and we're ensuring that we're, um, using our funds properly as, as you've discussed. And, and ensuring that we have, you know, the resources with our COVID fund and all of that. But I definitely think it's, it's, again, this could be a conversation for upcoming budget meetings. I know this is probably more a statement, um, but there is a list of necessary educators and support staff across the district, such as, uh, you know, we still need the assistant principal at the high school and, and, um, you know, the, the interim assistant principal, who got to athletic director position, I would assume, hoping athletics will come back. But there are going to be, I know that you, you're focusing a lot of resources on sped, uh, social education programs in, um, 2021. So I just want to make sure that although, you know, the optics could be, um, that we're doing okay with the stuff that we are going with right now, that it's paramount that we definitely support our staff and get the appropriate staff, additional staff put into place, for those students, um, that will need some additional, I don't want to call it COVID recovery, uh, educational, um, support. Especially, you know, some of our folks, um, that have been remote since March. You can't forget that you have children that have been fully remote since March of 2020. So scarily, that's been, you know, major, I mean, it's been this entire year. So, um, making sure that we focus our, our attention on the appro, the appropriate educational professionals, whether that's a para, a social worker, um, electives, you know, such as, such as art and all those other things that help the whole mind and the whole student develop. So I, I do look forward to some more budget workshops and conversation with that.
Thank you, Dana. Uh, and I just to, just to add into that, I think, you know, based on what Dana said there, also what Dr. Willett has said and, uh, from Badu said earlier in the conversation, you know, the, our subcommittees are, are going to be doing just amount, humongous amounts of work over these next few months. And not just from the budget, but also to position ourselves correctly where, you know, we, when we do come out of this. So I, I'm excited to hear everybody with these ideas and sincerely hope that these same ones are reiterated in those various committees. Badu.
So, um, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or place to ask this, but, um, you know, what is it that we're doing to attract staff, um, you know, so like, you know, so I know we're looking for new principals. Like, what is it that we're doing to attract quality staff?
So, Dr. Willett, why don't we, uh, it's a great question, Dr. Willett, let's put that in, uh, points of information. If, if you're okay with it, I think that's.
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah, it's fine. That's fine.
Anything else?
Nope. I'll lower my hand.
And Dana, your hand is still up from before or a new one?
I'm sorry. I think, I think Ashley has to lower it for me, Tony. You got to get on that.
I can lower it.
Dr. Willett, as soon as you see her hand go up, drop it back down. I, I think that's what I'm hearing from. Okay. Okay, uh, getting aside, let's move on to H3 then, sir.
Great. H3 tonight, uh, performance and profile report. We, um, we do, uh, we submit these to the, um, to the state of Connecticut every year. They're typically submitted for a year or so, um, in the past. And, uh, they do have a number of character limits. For instance, uh, one of the first sections is 3,400 characters, so you can't go beyond that. So, uh, each time, each year in November, um, the, the law says to share this with the Board of Education. So I'm sharing the general narrative with the Board of Education for each of the sections of the profile and performance report. Please keep in mind, when you look at the language and the vernacular here, that it might look a little choppy, because you have to, you have to keep it to the, say, the first section of those 3,400 characters. So we have to cut it all down and use a lot of acronyms and so on, try to get it in there. And also represent as much of the great things that are going on as we possibly can. So, um, you know, I won't read the entire thing to people, but essentially, you know, it does highlight the district's initiatives. Some of the great things going on from mastery-based learning to data teams to, um, you know, our student assistance team models and our, uh, multi-tiered systems of supports, uh, social emotional learning. And, um, you know, the teaming structures that comes from No Child Left Behind and from, uh, what's called the, um, well, it's, it's a special model of education called Turning Points 2000, um, for middle schools. You know, positive behavioral interventions and supports. And, um, you know, and a variety of other initiatives that the district has been doing, both curricular, um, and staff-centered. You know, the, the talent public schools really does an, uh, an amazing job of, of, uh, making sure that the supports are there and that, uh, the community asserts. Other examples of, uh, doing things to reduce racial and ethnic and economic isolation. This section is even shorter. I think we're given, uh, a really, really small number of characters. And I'm not sure exactly why they do that for these sections, but, um, it makes it kind of hard to put in everything that you want to put in. But having said that, um, you know, we have a number of different initiatives, uh, that the district's been doing, including special classes, uh, special programs, some of the community workshops you've noticed are things that we do. And, um, you know, the, these really do help in, in many, many ways. And of course, there's always room to grow, um, but the system continues to do, uh, work in this area as well. And, um, you know, I think we can all be proud of, of what the community has, has brought forth in its schools. It really is a, a school community effort. And again, equitable allocation of resources, even fewer characters are allowed in this particular section. So you'll notice that as it goes along, the sections become even more and more truncated. But, um, this one has an obscenely low number of characters, so we have to really smash it all in. But that, that part of, you know, this really just covers how we have, you know, great energy standards and systems. And, um, Talent has really done some great and creative things. You know, and it's, uh, logistics and management and energy management and, and health management and all of that. So if anybody wants further extrapolations on any of these areas, I would be happy to do, you know, one-on-one or small group conversations about it. But essentially, to wrap it up, this is, uh, you know, the, uh, the state submission of the profile and performance report sections. Has H3 for tonight.
Okay, Christine.
Thank you, Tony. Um, Dr. Willett, I was actually just curious, what does the state do with this? Do they give us feedback on, on the report?
Nope, uh, no, they do not. And there, there's a lot of reports that they don't, we never hear anything from the state about it again. But, um, but what I believe happens with these is they, they post them on the state's site under EdSite. So somewhere out there under EdSite, there are the performance, uh, profile and performance reports for all schools. So it's one of the many, um, uh, state resources that are offered on, uh, what's called the accountability sites. So you can go to the state site, EdSite, and you can pull it up. And I think they have all what's called the PPRs. In the law, they call it SSPs, which are strategic school profiles, but they changed it, but they never changed the law. So the, the actual name for it now is Performance and Profile Report. So if you see something online called an SSP, it, it's actually the old version of the PPR.
I guess it's good then that they don't make you do three times as many characters if they don't.
No, I guess not, but it is hard to smash it all in, but yeah, sometimes it's harder. You should just let me write it. But yeah.
All right, thank you.
Badu.
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, thank you, Tony. I did just want to have a quick question about, or I don't know how quick of a question it will be, but, um, can you talk about the benefits of open choice learning? I know that some people will sit there and think that, you know, yeah, of course it's going to benefit those coming in. Can you talk a little bit about how it benefits us as a community other than the dollar, the dollars that it brings in?
Yes, yes. And, and that conversation, um, that is a, uh, that is a conversation that, that really we, you would, you know, we would benefit from hours to talk about. So I'll, I'll try to truncate that into a small space here on this meeting. But anytime anyone wants to explore that, that'd be, um, that'd be, I'd welcome it. The history of the open choice program in Connecticut goes back to the 50s, basically 50s, 60s in Connecticut. An extremely important initiative and is, you know, generally a part of civil rights in Connecticut in general. And, um, it's really an initiative that brings communities together. You know, I think that there, there's a number of different ways to look at it, and I certainly respect, um, all of those different ways. I think in one of our meetings, we talked about, you know, um, individual. you know, um, individuals, um, you know, that, that, uh, you know, have critiqued the programs. And I think that, uh, that there are some, you know, meaningful feedback, like, you know, uh, certain, that we can take from that. But, um, but, you know, in general, the, you know, across the entire state, uh, it's designed to bring the communities together. You know, Connecticut, Connecticut is one of the most segregated, uh, states in the entire country. Um, and its schools are among the most segregated schools in the entire country. And you can make an argument that in Connecticut, you know, over, over the historical span of the last, say, 50, 60, 70 years, um, we are more segregated now than, than even times in the past. So, um, you know, programs like Open Choice are absolutely crucial. And, uh, you know, they really do provide students with an opportunity to, um, you know, to, to be a part of each other's lives from the earliest age forward. And, you know, if there's, you know, um, let me just try to find the right way to say it. You know, it is really, uh, America's hope that we are, we are able to, to live and be um, and function in this country with people that are not exactly like us. The country is, is born of, of many, many different, you know, groups together. And, um, our success together is, is, is basically relying on our ability to come and know and love each other. And, you know, Open Choice, that program, that, that is designed for that purpose, to, to bring the communities together, to be able to have children exposed to other children that, you know, are not like themselves, not from the same backgrounds, um, and grow up together, not just, uh, you know, not just drop in with each other, you know, once they're 16. You know, in our district, it starts in kindergarten, you know, grade, and it goes all the way through. So children really get to know each other. And that, that makes a difference. It, it's, it's been shown through all kinds of levels of research that that makes a difference in how, um, they perceive each other, how responsive and culturally responsive they are. You know, how, how that expands equity and, and expands understanding. So this program is, is among the most crucial programs for the state of Connecticut, for our country, for our children. And when I say our children, I mean, all of the children, you know, in Connecticut. So, um, you know, that's a, that's a, a rather long-winded, but yet still shorter than the full conversation, uh, explanation of it.
Yeah, no, I, I look forward to having that conversation with you someday. Sure.
And, and Mattu, I think, uh, I, I think that's an excellent question. I appreciate you for bringing that up. I think it's also a topic that deserves its own portion on the agenda, you know, more than we could give in just a quick answer. So, Dr. Willard, might I recommend that we add that to the future and at a point, hopefully soon, where you've got time to really put together a presentation for that?
I would be happy to do that, of course.
Mattu, did you have anything else, sir?
Nope, nope. I'm good, sir.
All right. Uh, so no other hands, Dr. With it? Are you ready to move on to H four?
I am. Yes. Uh, Honeywell. So, um, tonight, just H four, wanted to introduce the Board of Education to a conversation on the Honeywell Agreement. At this time, uh, we are looking at terminating the contract with Honeywell. I wanted to make the Board of Education aware of this, um, as a first read, so that, uh, you know, the board can process this and, and provide, you know, feedback, provide feedback directly to me. Um, and then I can execute it as, um, you know, as your employee. But, uh, what we wanted to do is just give you a general sense of some of the reasons why we're looking to, um, you know, to move on in this situation. Those are listed as A, B, C, D, and E here. I won't, uh, again, read everything word for word. But, um, over the span of the last few years, since the installation of the geothermal systems and what's called the ESCO agreement, which is essentially an energy, uh, energy plan and agreement, um, you know, we have, uh, you know, we've evolved to a point where most of our operations and, uh, you know, and what we do is highly efficient and, and we're capable of doing it, um, without the agreement that we, we had when, you know, we needed to put those geothermals and systems in place. We've learned a lot. Um, and at this point, the benefits of having such an agreement with Honeywell are no longer in the interest of the district. So just as a general overview, um, you know, the measurement and verification studies that we would do at the end of every year, they're yielding less and less, um, returns. Those, uh, measurement and verification, um, processes cost the district money. So, um, you know, having less and less a return from that, uh, really eats into the benefit of, of having it. So, um, you know, to kind of give you a short explanation on A, um, we're able to do a lot of the energy conservation things on our own. We have a direct, uh, an awesome director of facilities in Pete Staba. So, you know, we, we really are getting all the benefits of, uh, these energy savings and we really don't need, um, anymore to be doing M&amp;V processes that basically we pay for just to let us know that, you know, we're in fact doing it. Um, we also, um, have invested in those to, to, uh, use as a measurement, um, that, uh, that we use with Honeywell. And, uh, you know, we've noticed over the span of years that Honeywell also feels that it's in its best interest to come to a settlement agreement with Talon. So we feel that not only does Talon's, um, think that it's a good time for that, so does Honeywell. Um, on B, uh, some of the limiting things that, uh, we've been put under on the agreement are not actually in Talon's best interest. Uh, we've noticed that in a number of different ways. Um, and we've also noticed that, you know, we actually have established methodologies that run our systems, uh, non-pandemic years, uh, for a shorter period than it was actually proposed. So, you know, by not living up to those agreements, we're actually, um, running sometimes things more conservatively than, than would have even been suggested, um, or would have even been set forth as a parameter. So because of that, again, um, we no longer feel like, you know, this is a relevant agreement to have, um, doing the kinds of things we would be doing in our regular practice would in many ways actually be less than what was being imposed on us. And we want that flexibility. Um, and we've also noted that, um, you know, some of the savings that, uh, that were originally, um, put out there as part of it actually never did come to pass the way that they were stated to, uh, and the district has complied with, with everything. So, um, it's another example of how we would, we would probably be better off doing it on our own at this point. C, the town and the BOA required to conduct tasks related to the M&amp;V process that take up, um, a lot of time. And they can be done in a way that, um, you know, maybe more efficient outside of it. Uh, the Honeywell and third-party evaluators charge us for conducting this, and we can conduct these without those extra charges. So, yeah, again, it's another reason why this is not, uh, no longer a necessary component. We don't need to, uh, to lose the resources and time in this manner. Uh, again, I think that both the, the town and the, the board feel this way, town and board, uh, staff feel this way. And, uh, we also feel that Honeywell, uh, is feeling this way too, as, uh, each of our, you know, as partners, we are both looking to, uh, to settle and to come out of the agreement. D, as you know, um, the town consumes about 5% of the energy. The Board of Ed is much bigger, more buildings, more people, um, more staff. And so you just, in a general terms, it's a bigger physical operation. The success of any plan is really driven by what the school system is doing. And in this case, our geothermal systems at TASTMS have been a big part of that. You know, weather is driving some of the dynamics today. Um, the last few winters have been much warmer winters and we generally see more savings when it's a colder winter because the usage, you know, um, in the past was, has been because of a longer winter. And when we have a similarly longer winter, we usually save, you know, more comparatively. The warmer and milder winters, um, have led us to run the systems a little bit differently. So in general, you know, we're experiencing more energy pricing fluctuations. And, uh, you know, what we can take advantage of on our own is, uh, has generally been more effective than any, you know, any part of the agreement we've been in. So because the contract has a 2.75 energy cost inflation rate every single year, you know, we feel that, that that's actually not, um, not something that we need to continue, uh, continue to be involved with. Uh, we can reevaluate our situation based on the fact that we've got warmer winters now and, um, you know, generally as a trend. And, uh, and, you know, actually do a better job, uh, alone, you know, as an individual district versus, uh, you know, remaining in, in the agreement. Finally, if you take a look at, um, what we've received for shortfall checks, and a shortfall comes when we demonstrate that we are doing everything that we were required to do energy-wise, and yet the promise of, uh, you know, the, generally what was put out there in the beginning, is not, uh, fully being, uh, experienced. So we are getting these checks back. We are getting these, um, these amounts back because we are doing what we were told to do. And it's falling short of, of what was, uh, was stated in the beginning. And so you take a look at those figures, um, the narrative on it below explains how over a span of, you know, four or five years, you know, that is what we get returned to us, but there's a cost. We have to spend money on those M&amp;V processes. And when you add it all up and you take a look at where we end, um, we're averaging out to about, you know, 14,000 a year. We believe that, um, the settlement would be more favorable because that settlement would be an amount of money that would be, a return of a number of years to the district potentially. So while we can't get into, uh, complete, complete nitty-gritty on this because the settlement agreement is not yet, you know, uh, complete, we do believe that it is in both the town's and the board's best interest that we seek a settlement agreement, uh, with Honeywell. This is the first read. Uh, I am recommending as the superintendent that we pursue the settlement agreement. And so, you know, in the next meeting or maybe the meeting thereafter, you know, we'd like a motion of support by the Board of Education to, to do that. So I did want, before I did anything else on it, to, to get it in front of you as a first read, and then in a subsequent meeting, have you, um, take action.
Thank you, Dr. With it. Uh, just clarification here. Um, Ms. Griffin, has FFC taken a look at this?
Um, yes, we, we discussed most of this with Dr. Willet last week. So, um, I think, Dr. Willet, um, did you say, uh, do we have a dollar amount for the settlement just yet, or that's still?
That's pending. That's why I haven't gone into any additional details about that because that's still to, we have to get your agreement to terminate it before we go and finalize anything. And the town, and the towns as well.
Okay. I know we spoke about that you did think it would be worthwhile, dollar amount wise, to, to, um, terminate it, um, with one lump sum kind of, uh, payment from them as opposed to, um, what'd you say, roughly $14,000 a year? That the lump sum would be more beneficial in the long run? Because how many more years would we be doing the, um, the, uh, annual study with them?
Well, we're, we're in this now, uh, from the period of time of payoff, we're probably 13 years we're still out. 10 or 13 years, um.
Okay. So if we say 13 years at $14,000, just kind of throwing it out there is, I think if the payoff was at least, you know, kind of that, it would be, it would be, uh, worthwhile. Plus it's the present value of that dollar amount as well.
Right. The board would see it too. Recognizing that this is a, a first read, I'm, I'm assuming that FFC would do a lot of the heavy lifting and really crunch through that and kind of bring back to the board for that second read, whether it's, uh, your recommendation.
Yep. Um, well, definitely I may, we'll make a note to put it on the agenda in January, um, and we can, um, you know, see where we stand at that point.
Copy that. All right. Jacob?
Yeah, no, I, I think initially, uh, my initial opinion of this from FFC and, and this board meeting is like, it makes sense. You know, that's how I'm feeling right now. I mean, it looks like the last fiscal year, we lost money on it just in the last year because it got $27,000 back, but it cost $40,000 to do the studies. But I did wonder with Dr. Willet, um, because I don't know the whole history of this contract. Do we need to work with the town on this, on the town side? Or is this more just a Board of Ed thing?
It's both. Okay. And, and, and when we, uh, essentially what I'm doing with the board is being done with the town council as well.
Okay.
Recommendation is going to be made to them, um, in a similar vein.
All right. Did, did they feel similar about this, sir? Can you say? I'm just curious.
My, yeah, my impression is that both town and board staff feel very strongly that this is a good time to terminate this, uh, to look for a settlement.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, Mattu?
Uh, thank you. Um, so I, I, I read through this and I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it correctly. They charge us $40,000 a year in addition to what it costs us in terms of staff time.
Oh, yeah.
And we, and we expect those, those, I guess we'll call them rebate checks. We expect those to continually decrease. And those other costs to, you know, basically stay where they are.
Yeah, our experience has been that the benefit of it is getting more and more, uh, paltry. And that the, uh, you know, getting a settlement agreement could equate to a number of years of what that would have been. But you can actualize that benefit in a short span of time and, and do something positive as a Board of Ed with it.
Right. Okay. Yep. That was it.
Yeah, you may even be able to make an investment that would then have additional savings for, you know, going out that would, that would even further expound the benefit or compound the benefit.
Dana?
Thank you, Tony. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I just put these earbuds in and you're another finicky. Um, yeah, we did talk, we did talk a bit about this at FFC. And Dr. Willet had, uh, made mention that he did partner with staff, specifically Pete Saba, in regards to this, who is, um, probably one of the most, engaged folks, um, and into, in, in tune with what is actually going on with this specific contract. As Jacob said, it does look like we're losing year over year. Um, so, you know, I, I would be, uh, you know, obviously I want to yield to the, to listen to the experts of, of, you know, in the educational system and, and, um, Pete and our superintendent are by far superior, what, uh, are fantastic at what they do. Just looking at this quickly and going through this, it does seem like the best bet would be to do what we need to do to sever ties and close that out. Um, what I will say is whatever that settlement would be, Dr. Willet, would that be something that we would lump sum? And then put it back into our budget? Or would that be something that would be spread about a few years? How does that work when, when and if a settlement is had?
My impression at this time is that it would be a, a lump sum.
Okay. So I, it could make a phenomenal, quite an impact on
Could, it could be helpful.
An area of opportunity that we need to increase some expenditures that we might need in our COVID, hopefully COVID recovery year in 21 to 22. So.
Yeah. And there, you know, could, yeah.
I have the shortest, I have the shortest answer you've ever given me. Uh, yeah.
I could go on and on about it. It could go into Yusef, you know, and Yusef is a good friend for us. There's a number of, uh, way, things that can happen.
Okay. Well, no, I, yeah, I just wanted to kind of, I was, I was hopeful for a lump sum that that's what you would say. So I, I was just curious, but on, uh, December 9th, at 9:02 PM was the shortest Dr. Willet answer I've received. So.
I'm not even sure it was a full word. I think it was something like that's what happens at nine o'clock. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I think that it is something that you and Mr. Saba recommend. Um, you know, again, we could talk about it further in FFC more than we already have. But I, you know, you guys are totally in tune with us and have been dealing it with, with it since 2015. So I feel like you can speak intelligently about where we stand with it. So thank you.
Yeah, sure. And Mr. Zaba is a, you know, is a, is a, he's a rare talent with respect to facilities and, um, you know, he, he speaks very much in favor of, um, of terminating that and going to a settlement.
We're lucky to have him. Thank you.
Rainey?
Um, I just wanted to ask, since part of the decision-making process for us with the town, does that necessarily mean, I mean, I just don't want us to get ahead of ourselves around the money. Is there some sharing and, you know, decision-making that is joint around what would happen there?
Yeah, they have to agree and we have to agree.
Right, understood, but then...
This part is just, and I've already talked to the town, so me doing this is in alignment with what the, what the town staff is doing with the Town Council as well.
Right. And so then, once the settlement, then there will be some further conversation about what we do with it from there. So, just to clarify. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Willet, H5, a good overview.
All right. So, moving to H5, just, this item is meant to give everybody literally a budget overview, like a flyby of our budget season. You know, we have had a truncated season, in that, you know, COVID has really kind of gotten in the way of a lot of things, and this is not, not any different, it's kind of gotten in the way a bit. But, and normally, as you may remember in the past, you know, I've done some sessions as early as October. In this case, our first one this year was, was December, December seventh, there was one scheduled prior to that, but Talon lost power almost entirely that night, so, you know, the COVID and nature have not cooperated, but we're persevering. We did have, you know, there's really two kinds of classes or groups of budget happenings in Talon for the Talon Public Schools. The first grouping of these is superintendent Q and As, and they're generally prior to the superintendent, AKA me, giving my proposal to the Board of Education. And as you know, as has had happened many, as, you know, this year and many years in the past, we'll have some workshops. Those are designed to be less, less, you know, structured or rigid than, say, a traditional Robert's Rules meeting, and they have, you know, opportunity for people to speak more, more than two minutes, ask more questions, and have more of a free flow of conversation. You know, once we get into, you know, January, February, that zone, the Board of Ed has to do a lot of very, very detailed and serious work in public session, and so that has natural constraints with respect to having more of a, you know, open forum aspect. Once they get into that zone, they, they have about a month to, to come to some decisions, so, you know, through a series of meetings, which we'll talk about next, you know, they do their, their process of, of synthesizing. But in the, in the months that lead up to it with the superintendent Q and As, these are often, you know, open workshops, the January fourth version, this year's on January fourth, but you'll notice that, and people who have participated in the past, this is an opportunity to talk to all of the, what I call cost center managers of the school district, those would be principals, administrators, director of people services, facilities director, IT, T staff, meaning education technology, instructional technology staff. In a, in a non-COVID year, they would all be sitting around at different stations in the room, do a brief presentation, and then people can choose whichever station they want to go to, and for about fifteen minutes, they can pretty much have a free-flow conversation and ask anything that they want. And that allows for a lot of really great follow-up questions, and, you know, pretty in-depth conversation, in-depth understanding of various facets of the school system in general. So it's not just a quality budget activity, it's a quality school system activity, people really get a good, good sense of what their school system is, is, you know, got going on. So, you know, the December seventh one that we did just a few days ago, is again, just an overview of where we were, where we are, you know, what some of the considerations are and constraints. By January seventh this year, because we probably won't be able to do that in person, I'm going to put out a registration in a, in a week or so, and normally, people would just physically show up, and, you know, physically just walk over to whatever section they wanted to go to. We'll probably have to do a registration this time, because with respect to Zoom, I'll have to put people in, you know, Zoom rooms, so I'll have to know who's coming, and have to kind of have people register. So, for this year's version of this, people will just register, we'll have a beginning where I talk a little bit and go over some information, and then people will go to their breakout rooms. It'll be the budget breakout rooms, and there'll be different Zoom budget breakout rooms. We'll have people register so that we know what to expect, and we can, you know, make the situation as beneficial for everyone as possible. And so, we'll have those Zoom breakout rooms go for about fifteen minutes, and again, have that opportunity for people to really access and ask questions of curriculum supervisors and staff, and liaisons, and all of the people that know, you know, and operate every day in the district, that are responsible for budget and resources. And we'll do that in three different groupings of about fifteen minutes each, and then we wrap up at the end with another kind of open Q and A session. And again, it is not just a budget activity, it's really a community activity, where you get to know your schools in a level that sometimes you never could before. And, you know, it, it allows for some really good conversations. Finally, on January eleventh, if we were unable to do it on the fourth for some reason, I know that we know, we, we never expect to lose power here, but it happens, and so if something else strange happens that, that makes the fourth not possible, we will do that rotation activity on the eleventh. It's a highly valued one, I want to make sure people get it. If we have already done it, then it'll be wrapping up of the workshop Q and A kind of structure. And at that point, January eleventh, I am very close to presenting the superintendent's proposals to the Board of Education, and, you know, we will have had the opportunity to do a lot of talking and a lot of interacting. And I do, obviously, take the hard things that everyone says, and I think the board, you know, does, you know, they, they are always involved in listening and watching, and, and we're all sort of together, trying to build the best possible situation we can every time. So, in January eleventh, we, we have a opportunity to kind of wrap it up, just before I do my proposal to the board. And the board, then, at that point, we move into, say, the second phase, and our hard-working board members, who have the interest of the children at heart, go into their series of board meetings specifically dedicated to the budget, or with a large portion of their meeting dedicated to the budget. These are in the plan and in the budget calendar. You'll notice that some of them say TBD, that's usually because they are set aside for people to attend, or for the Board of Education to initiate, should the Board of Education feels like, feel like it needs them. So I expect probably the board this year will initiate these ones that you see as TBDs. But this is where the, they take the superintendent's proposed budget, and they take, you know, the, the various facets of the things that I put before them, and then they really start to chew on it. You know, obviously, they push back on things, they ask questions, they, you know, ask for articulations, and in the process of, you know, the thirteenth, the fourteenth, the nineteenth, the twenty-seventh, the third, all the way through the tenth, they're, they're coming to a, you know, a, a final resting place as to where they feel the budget should be, and that budget is the Board of Education budget. They consider the proposals of the superintendent, they consider all of the aspects of things that, that they need to be thinking about, and, you know, and the responses to their questions. And then, on the tenth, I present their budget, as they have synthesized it to them as an elected body, and they vote on it. They vote to usually move that budget forward, and that budget then is, is carried by the superintendent to the town manager. Essentially, by voting to adopt that budget on, say, February tenth here, they are in the same, you know, in the same night, essentially instructing the superintendent then to carry this budget to the town manager, and the town manager, by February twelfth, receives it, and then incorporates that into what they're considering for the town budget. That's why it's followed on February second, twenty-second, with a joint meeting between the council and the board, where the two bodies actually talk about what the board's, you know, had, what the board has adopted. And the following process from that point on, is it being synthesized into the town council's budget, and the council then decides, essentially, what it thinks it can afford, and that becomes the overall budget request that you're familiar with, that culminates in the referendum on May second. So I, I know that, you know, the, the Board of Ed puts a tremendous amount of energy into considering people's thoughts and feelings on it. You know, they, they start that real heavy lift around, right, on or around the thirteenth, once I present the proposed budget, and you're familiar with most of the rest. So, that's a general kind of helicopter view of it, and, you know, any questions that people have, happy to answer, both on and offline. We do have, just at the end of this, you know, we did post online the official budget calendar, and the budget Q and A, there is an area online for people to ask questions. Those questions are eventually put into an FAQ document, that can also be found on the Board of Ed's website. Essentially, just go to the main website for the Board of Education, and click on, click on the budget option, and you can see all the information that is being posted on the budget, as well as the FAQ. I would actually, you know, put that on the display right now, but I feel like if I go off of this particular page or screen, that somehow this is going to show everybody's stuff all over the place again. So I'll just tell you, it's www.talon.k12.ct.us, that's the typical Board of Ed district site, and on the right side, it is a budget link. And if people want me to do that here, I can, I can show us here, but otherwise, I'll, I'll just not blow up the screen you're looking at, unless people want that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Willet, and I know, you're just speaking for myself, we, we enter this budget process with this possibly being one of the more important budgets that, that I've been aware of in a very long time. You know, not just from the situation and the things that we're having to deal with from a COVID perspective, but also as we ensure that as we, fingers crossed, exit the pandemic experience, that we're still positioned to be in the place that, that our students and our town needs. I'm excited going into this, because I think we're going in with some wonderful board goals, some amazing district goals, and, you know, all the hard work that Portraits and graduate is bringing into this. So I would strongly recommend that anybody that's able to participate in these community activities, voice your opinion, Dr. Willet's given the website, and there's opportunities for the questions, as well as the board ourselves. As we go in, we've got multiple opportunities here to sit and debate and discuss, and ensure that the, the budget that we push forward is absolutely the one that our, our district needs to succeed. We'll open up the opportunity, does any of the board have anything they want to speak on this? That being said, thank you, Dr. Willet, for your report. We will move on to committee and liaisons. FFC?
Um, yes, thank you, Tony. We met last Wednesday, and we reviewed the November thirtieth month-end numbers, a little bit more detailed than the schedule we got tonight. We talked a little bit about the potential shortfall in food services due to, you know, kind of not being able to, to, you know, have the same lunches and that we've done in the past. We discussed the emergency fund, still to be set up with the town, and Dr. Willet is working on that. We touched a little bit on next year's budget process, and we talked a little bit about one of our board goals, specifically the out-of-district tuition revenue, and then we went through the, the Honeywell agreement that the board was presented tonight. We meet again, I think we meet again on January seventh. We put in a special meeting to talk a little bit more about the budget, once it gets a little bit closer. That's about it, thank you.
Okay. Curriculum?
Um, so, curriculum met last Thursday, and it was a nice meeting. We had Madhu, we welcomed Madhu, up onto the curriculum committee, up as my co-chair. We also had a nice update for pandemic considerations with curriculum, talked a bit about culturally responsive education, we kind of had a follow-up from a full board presentation from a couple weeks ago. And we also spent a lot of time talking about pathways programs, which is kind of related to the, to that board goal that Ms. Griffin referenced, and talked about what we might do with them within the upcoming year to keep kids in district and not, and keep them in district, because I want to stay here, because we have lots of great educational opportunities. And I don't know if Madhu has anything else to, to add to that, that's what I've got.
No, that pretty much summed it up.
All right. Thank you, guys. Communication, Sophia, I know you didn't meet, but did you have anything you want to say here?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Same for policy, we did not meet since the, the last one. Dana, I know you've got action coming up that relates to it, but would you like to speak here?
Um, yes, I'll just say a few things about, we've had a few meetings since our last Board of Ed meeting for Birch Grove. We did have our standard construction update for Mr. Carcha, who's doing a phenomenal job with his team, staying on target and staying on, on the construction path. We talked, we talked, every meeting, we talk about the budget and where we are, and we are right in a good spot, was their exact words, about where we are on budget. We have had a few, we had an update in regards to the unsuitable soils. We've been working with the state to get invoices, and so that we can get proper resolution for the presentation for the Town Council for approval. The Town Council is aware of that, and about the letter and confirm, the application has been submitted, so the hope is to get the grant letter so that we can get resolution in front of the Town Council this month. It does take a two meeting, two meetings will be necessary to do it, first read, second read, obviously. I think I saw Katie Murray on the call tonight, I don't know if she is, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Katie.
I'm here.
But I don't know if there's anything you have to, to add, and I will keep everybody up to date, before Katie jumps in, I will keep everybody up to date for the mock room, because it's definitely going to be something that we, as a board, will be able to walk through and see that mock room. So, I know that they're, they're moving along rapidly with that area as well. So, thank you, and Katie? Sorry to put you on the spot, Katie.
No, not at all. The mock-up room, I'm told, should be ready within the next two weeks or so. So I, I know that getting the Board of Ed an opportunity to walk through and specifically see the mock-up room, which will be a typical classroom in the building, which is pretty much substantially complete, and it's, it's a reference point for the subcontractors to be able to go in and see, you know, how is this really supposed to look? But for us as a building committee, and for you as the Board of Ed, and I'm sure Mr. Swanson and Dr. Willet are also very excited to be able to see the mock-up room. As Dana summarized, we are on schedule, on budget, things are looking really good out on the site. For those of you who don't drive by, like I do every day, anytime I leave my house, I have to drive by Birch Grove, so I always get to see the progress, and it looks great out there. So, we're very, very pleased. The next phase that we are going through, or about to undertake, is furniture and technology, and we are going to be presented with a final list of recommended furniture items for the school, as well as technology items, and that list is compiled by end-user focus group meetings, essentially. I know that Dr. Willet has been involved in these, as well as the technology director for the district, and the principal of the school, as well as a small collection of teachers to represent their grade levels, so that they can give their input on various furniture items and technology needs. And we have a set budget for this, which will be reinstated once the unsuitable soil gets removed from our budget, and we will proceed with that in the, really, in the next six weeks or so, making some decisions. So we're pretty excited to get those things finalized. The update on unsuitable soils, actually, the council met last night and had essentially their first reading of the removal of unsuitable soils from the building project into its own project, so we're hoping that there'll be a public hearing two weeks from yesterday, and hopefully, that will be met with a lot of support, and the council will vote hopefully that evening, and then, those money should be available to us once all the backend... And then those monies should be available to us once all the back end. Financial transfers happen. Those money should be available to us hopefully by the end of January. So really right on time for us to make some furniture and technology decisions.
I hate to ask this, Ms. Murray, thank you so much for being here tonight. We do have to, we have a K2 item under board action. I don't know if you. You would want to hang around to that point.
Yes, I'm happy to hang around for that too.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. That's, that item is really the meat and potatoes of what we've been dealing with as a building committee. So I didn't even start to talk about that because I can. Talk you through as much of that item as you need. But we are on, on schedule to hand over keys to Dr. Willet. I know he's very excited to receive them. For August 23rd, 2021. To, which should give everyone enough time to get the teachers moved in and for the start of that academic year. So we're very.
Tell you, when I was younger, I, my first car was a Datsun 210 station wagon. I was very excited to get the keys to that. And I am far more excited to get the keys to Birch Grove. And I know Mr. Swanson is as well. So.
I don't know, the Datsun sounds pretty.
It was. It was a rockin' vehicle, but you know, go Google it. Every, any kids out there, Google it. That is what I was driving. It is definitely a cool vehicle. However. Birch Grove is way cooler.
Absolutely. And I think it's great. And I just want to kind of dovetail, you know, piggyback on what Katie said. You know, our, our business partners and design team have been working phenomenally in partnership with Mr. Swanson. And many staff members in Birch Grove to test different things such as different types of chairs. For, and, and use them in real in-person scenario to see, you know, what's working for. Our, you know, our wiggly feet K through two. Students, you know, so there's been a lot, a lot of action. By our staff behind the scenes that has really supported this progress, which has been great. And I know how much, you know, our educators in Birch Grove, you know. If anything that this whole entire pandemic has shown us is even more so cements the, the theory that our, our teachers are. Phenomenal what they do and we're lucky to have them in Tallinn, but they've definitely given extra time to help with this so we can really get it right from every fine. Detail. So, and Katie are doing a phenomenal job. I know that's Birch Grove Committee is. Is an extra, it's a full-time job. So I don't know how you're doing it. Thank you.
And thank you both. And Dana, just. In discussion with the K2, and I know we'll talk more about that. I, I think that the, the decisions and the frequency that we're going to have to approve things coming up and, you know, how quickly. From what I understand, the, the state and the project turns to you guys and then you guys have to bring that to us and. We've got to say yes or no immediately or bad things happen. I recognize that and the importance of that. I just would ask that to the best of our abilities, we lean forward. And any of the things that we anticipate could become that, that we're bringing it for a heads up type thing. We've got opportunities on future agendas to talk them if we need to. That way we can make sure that we can turn those questions around as quickly as you need them to happen. Otherwise, thank you both. Excellent job and I appreciate.
Absolutely, Tony. And thank you for acknowledging the fact that unfortunately sometimes we're going to have to pivot with minimal. Information or direction, but we have to trust that our experts that are, that are involved are guiding us rightly, the correct way. We do need to ask the difficult questions and dig in. But yes, we are going to have to be able to be flexible to turn and pivot quite a bit. August 28th or whatever, our start day of 2021, 20, whatever it is, is coming very quickly. We want to make sure that we do hand over those keys and. The Datsun is a thing of the past and Birch Grove is a thing of the future. So, but I appreciate your acknowledgement on that, Tony.
I, I have a little one in the other room that I'm hoping will be in that entry class. So I'm, I'm as excited as you both are. So thank you. All right. Did I miss any committees? I don't believe so.
Well, negotiations.
Sorry, negotiations. My bad, Reenie.
That's okay. Well, you know, we, we really can't say a lot, but I would, we are in the process still with the pairs and I. Feel like the team is working great together and we're really moving towards. Finalizing things, I think in the, in the very near term and it's, it's been great to work with everyone. So. That is all.
All right. That being said, I will move on to chairperson's report. I, I don't have anything prepared, but I do have. Two points that I want to bring up. Once again. To congratulate Ashley and her husband on the birth of their little girl. I, I find during everything that we've got going on, all the, the doom and the gloom and the, the very difficult decisions that we have to look at, it's. You know, quite often the, the picture of a newborn on Facebook that absolutely lights up my day. So. I certainly, while, while it's a miracle and a blessing for their family, I, I feel that it's been a wonderful thing, you know, all around, even, even for me. So. For, for both of them, congratulations. And if I can help, please let me know. The second thing I wanted to touch on. Has been. The, you know, one of the statements that was made last week again by our, our student reps. And I think it was articulated a couple of times in the emails that, that have come to us over this past week. Was that comment on. And how there was anxiety amongst the students, you know, within the schools and. You know, I know Dr. Willet and our staff, there, there are a multitude of resources that are available to them and I sincerely. Hope that, that they take advantage of that. From a personal perspective, you know, it caused me to, to go into my, my son's room. I have a. A junior at the high school and sit down with him and say, okay, all kidding aside. The bravado aside, how does it feel? What's school like? What do you think about what you're having to do? And really just have that conversation. To, to get what it looks like from those eyes. And I recognize that if we've asked that question to 200 or 300 of our kids, we're going to get 200 and 300 different conversations. But I, I can't stress again from a personal perspective, how important it is to sit down and have that conversation. You know, and let them know that while they're putting that mask on and they're, they're dealing with those things and the staff are dealing with. That for everything we can, we are right there with them. Supporting as we can. That's just a little something there. So, Dr. Willet. Let's move on to K1 policies. I know everybody has anxiously been awaiting a policy conversation.
And here we are. So I believe this is a second read of 5140. It's an update of the computer use policy for the district. There is an associated regulation as well. Essentially in the, in the online version, you know, red and blue signify the. Old language and the new language respectively. And if one cannot see color, then it is, is oftentimes italicized text and strikeout. So essentially for tonight, we are looking to try to get approval to a re-up of our computer use policy. The changes were looked at already by the policy committee and it is in accordance with the Shipman and Goodwin model policy. And so there are a couple of changes here that needed to happen and as well as some of the added language that the policy committee did. Most notably here in the policy that the board also reserves the right to monitor and. Monitor the use of and in this case restrict access to the domain, districts rather, computers. Should there, should there be violations of this policy? So essentially this is a second read of the situation. It's here for action. The regulation is also provided for the board's perusal and the public's perusal. Once again, the strikeouts are red and then blue for ads in this case. So at this point, if the board feels that it can. There could be a motion to approve the amendments to policy 5140 and recognize the associated regulation changes.
Jacob Mari, I approve the amendments to policy 5140 and recognize the associated regulation changes.
Second. Or either word.
Yep.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Please signify your, your preference with either a yea or a nay or abstention when your name is called. Jacob.
Aye.
Reenie.
Aye.
Sophia.
Aye.
Dana.
Aye.
Ms. Griffin.
Aye.
Madhu.
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. So, motion passes?
Right. So moving on, yep, moving on to, into our next K item, which in this case is K2. K2 is the Board of Education, I'm sorry, the Birch Grove Primary School Project approvals. There is a K2A and a K2B tonight. So we'll start with K2A. Each of these needs its own, its own motion. K2A, the motto, the BGP contractors compiled their first official change order submissions to the state of Connecticut. The BGP School Building Committee has already reviewed and approved these change orders. And they've been signed by the town manager. As such, these are presented to the Board of Education for notation in the meeting minutes and to authorize me to sign it. So the general sequence is that the Board of Education Building Committee, I'm sorry, the Board, the BGP Building Committee approves it. They end up being presented to the board for review and approval, authorizing me to sign. And then I sign it, I attach the minutes to the contractor and then it is submitted to the state of Connecticut. So that Tallinn can receive its reimbursements. The superintendent, me, fills out the, what's called SGC 042 form. And ultimately this is, you know, me getting that authorization from you to complete it and sign it. You can see on the Board of Ed agenda. The packet includes the change orders one to 11 as well as an index of the change orders. And the motion tonight, should the board feel that it can, is motion to accept and approve change, oh, change orders one through 11. From project number N14203, 0083 for the Birch Grove Primary School. Presented in the Board of Education meeting of December 9th, 2020. And authorize the superintendent to sign all related documentation and approvals. Please, please take note that the motion here is slightly different than the one in the original board packet. The difference is that I added from project N142-0083 for Birch Grove Primary School. To make sure that we had an abundance of specificity with respect to this.
Jacob Mari, I move to accept and approve change orders one through 11 presented in the Board of Education meeting of December 9th, 2020. Oh. Yeah, Jacob Mari, I move to accept and approve change orders one through 11 from project number N142-0083. For Birch Grove Primary School presented in the Board of Education meeting of December 9th, 2020. And authorize the superintendent sign all related documentation and approvals.
Dana Felbin, second.
I will open it up for discussion. Keep in mind that with the benefit of having Katie here, if questions.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if we were allowed to, the committee was going to open that up. Okay, good. Thank you, Tony.
Jacob.
Yes, so I did have a couple of questions about this. I was able to scan the packet, but there was a lot there. So. Just so I have it straight, the change orders are basically changes to our contract that I'm correct and. The fiscal impact should be zero because it's being taken out of a fund. The design contingency fund, we're also putting money back into that fund. Is that, do I have a general idea? Is that general idea correct, Ms. Murray or Ms. Felbin?
Yes, yes. This is Katie Murray. Yes, you are correct. There is one. Change order in there. I believe it's number four. Which is being paid for out of owner's contingency. We do have a contingency fund in with, both with the contractor and Tallinn is the owner. And the reason this one is being paid for out of owner's contingency is because it was an owner requested item. This was an item that Mr. Staba had requested be included. And so that particular item, which is. An amount of $3,303.38 will be paid for out of Tallinn's contingency. But the remainder of the change orders in this packet are either going into or coming out of. Construction contingency.
Okay. Do you know what the balances of, are those, of those funds are right now?
Yes. So the owner's contingency has a balance of. $102,000. And I'm, I'm just looking it up really quick. I think based on the meeting we had. On Monday night, the construction contingency has a balance of. Four, approximately 415,000, maybe it's between 410 and 415,000. And I will add here that when we started. When we finalized the budget in June of 2020. The construction contingency amount was $430,000. That amount was considered to be sufficient for this project by both the state, by the state of Connecticut, by the contractor themselves. By our owner's representative and by the architect. And since that time, we've had a number of changes to the contract. Including all the ones that are in front of you and a number of other ones that are coming to you at some point relatively soon. We've also had included in those were a number of credits. So these were changes to the contract where the contractor wanted to return monies to us. And these credits have a range of what they are. In here, I think we have included. A credit for epoxy flooring. That was a situation where accidentally two contractors, two subcontractors were given the same. Small area, they were both contracted to paint. And in final review to get the guys out on the feet, in the building to actually do the construction, it was discovered that there was this overlap. So the contractor, main contractor identified the overlap. Went to the two subcontractors, found which one could handle the work and also do it for the least amount of money. And the other contract subcontractor had that part of their contract canceled. And the savings came back to Tallinn. That was a great, this is an example of the due diligence that our contractor has. In the best interest of our community. And I, I really think that we're really lucky in that regard. Between the credits and the charges. We have, as I just reported, about $415,000 in construction contingency. That really shows that we've had a lot of credits to essentially very close to balance out the charges. And it's everyone that talks to us about this is very impressed by the situation we're in right now. So we're, we are, as a committee, also are very pleased about this.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for answering the questions. I'm glad to hear that. Things seem to be going well. Thank you.
Ms. Griffin.
Thank you, Tony. Katie, I see this change order tracker. Sorry, I don't know if you could see the document. Do we have something like this that has the dollar amounts? So the dollar amounts coming in, the credits, I mean, I'll be honest, to try to go through this hundred pages. And then cross-reference to this like lead sheet was really difficult. So. I'll be, also be honest and say that I feel very unprepared to vote for this tonight because I don't feel like I truly understand exactly. What all of these changes are. So. Is it in this packet or I would have to kind of take each one of these individual things and like cross-reference it to that lead sheet?
So the change order tracker sheet towards the right-hand side, kind of under the words de motto. That taught, that has. The values for each of these change orders. So this, the. The last major group of columns is called fund taken out of. And under that, there are four subcolumns. Are you following me?
Oh, you know what? I don't have that last column. No wonder. I have no dollar amounts.
Okay, sorry, that's.
That's why I'm having such a hard time.
Okay. So they are here. The CM contingency is the construction contingency. It started at four hundred thirty thousand and then the owner contingency is managed by Talon. And I believe, uh, the, this one, unfortunately, the green items are items that the building committee has passed. Uh, the items that are in your packet, first column, um, anything that's numbered in the first column is included in the big change order document that is in front of you. Uh, I will say that I agree with you that this document, um, and this part of your packet is incredibly cumbersome. However, the state requires all of the materials in this change order to be approved by you guys as the Board of Education and submitted to the state exactly as you approve it. So all of these documents are required in order for us to be reimbursed for these items. And therefore you have to improve, approve the entire packet. When they're presented to us as a building committee, we're usually seeing one to, maybe one day we saw five or six at a maximum. So for us, it, it is a little bit less cumbersome, I, I agree, than it is for you. Um, the other thing I'd like to comment on is, uh, your concern about not being able to kind of sift through it all and approve this. Um, and I, I understand that frustration. Uh, there are many times that we, as a building committee, feel like we are being backed into a corner and being forced to rubber stamp or prove things. Um, and with the speed of this project, quite frankly, uh, we've been told that's the way it's gonna go. If we want this school to open on August twenty-third, um, we need to move forward. And it, it, it does create some uncomfortable, uh, feelings and, and situations with the building committee. In this scenario or in this particular case, every single one of the items that is before you has already come to the building committee. And we have had a, sometimes a very spirited and robust conversation about every single item. We have some really wonderful community volunteers on the building committee, including several people who are in the construction industry, including Mrs. Felbin, who've been able to really lend their expertise to this project. Um, so I, I'm always impressed when I get on these meetings and talk to my, uh, co, co-members of the building committee. They're just incredibly knowledgeable. Um, so while that doesn't, uh, take away the scenario that, that you guys are really being told you have to approve this, um, and you don't have much choice. While that is true, I, I will say that we have done incredible diligence to ensure that the best decisions are being made on this project.
Thank you. And, and to be honest with you, now that I'm seeing some dollar amounts that I couldn't see before, seeing that it's, you know, really a net effect of, what is that, eighty-five thousand dollars? You know, I feel a little bit more comfortable. Um, so just to kind of question back to kind of what Mr. Holt was saying earlier. I see you have like these dates that they were presented to the building committee. Would it be possible, like, once a month, so for example, like all of those October dates? Like, could we perhaps get, you know, that on a monthly basis if it's stuff that you guys have kind of already hashed out? You know, just at least that we could do a quick review. Um, you know, I just monthly was just my thought. It might be easy. It doesn't look like there's too, too many per month. I don't know how it's gonna be going forward, but you know, just maybe that would be, um, a little bit easier. On both, you know, on you guys too, to not have to kind of present, you know, all this in one shot. I don't know if that's possible, but, um, but, um, I think that might be helpful for everybody.
Katie, can I chime in real quick? Do you mind?
Yes, please. Yes.
Okay. Christine, this can be a part of my lea- my, uh, commu- my liaison reports if, if needed. I try not to get everybody too into the weeds with everything that's going on, but, um, I don't want to put any extra effort or any extra work on Katie's plate to, to present something to the Board of Ed. I can just add this to my, um, liaison report.
Yeah.
Um, if there's any that come up. And, um, you know, we've had many emergency meeting, some of it is, when you're going through it, it's, it's talking ceiling tile and light fixtures. And like one of them was changing a type of light fixture for a just as efficient one for a lot more cost savings. Little things like that. I mean, I can do a quick overview so that you're not, you're not getting this all at once. Um, I can make sure that that happens.
Yeah, that would be perfect. Thank you, Dana. And thank you, Katie, for, for all this. I know that obviously when I looked at my hundred pages today, or yesterday, whenever I got this, I, you know, I know it's a lot of work. And so I appreciate all the time and energy you're putting into this. So, all right, thank you.
I will also say, um, that I think it's great that Dana will give you updates on the change orders that are coming through. From a procedural standpoint, um, in order for us to be able to be or to be eligible to be reimbursed for any of these items, this full packet, uh, with everything is going to have to come before you guys on a pretty regular basis going forward. Um, so I, I think Dana has come up with a great idea, uh, to, to give you guys updates. But please know that, you know, on a, on a pretty regular basis, you're gonna get a big packet like this, um, with everything that Dana's already reported in on.
It's just a, just a reminder that the state of Connecticut approved it as an emergency project, which is why it's got a very tight timeline to, um, to help us in many ways.
Okay. So Dana, your hand is up?
It's legitimately up, Tony. Thank you. Um, yeah, this is quite a daunting document, I'm sure, for everybody who's seeing it for the first time. But trust, I, I just want to reiterate what Katie said. We have a very diverse and educated, uh, diverse opinion and educated, um, building committee that was hand-selected when this project, um, came to fruition. Um, we have, uh, folks like myself in the construction industry. Uh, we have folks in the IT industry. We have folks in the education industry, um, as well as folks in the town. Um, so just as we're doing the heavy lifting and digging in our subcommittees, as, as Tony hit, Tony always says, getting to work, right? We are doing just as much and, and feel confident in the fact that your committee for Talon is, is doing its due diligence. And as Katie has called it spirited conversations, um, that's a, that's a very positive word for it. And I definitely think they've all been very respectful conversations with very differing opinions. On, I would say, pretty much even the, all, all these line items, even when we've had a credit, we've questioned it or it has been questioned. Although we're, we're all for getting a credit, don't get me wrong. Uh, it has been credit questioned as to why the credit and what we're doing about it and why it's coming to us and those kind of things. So, um, feel, have faith in the fact that your committee is doing what's right for our town. Our towns committee is doing what's right for our town, what's right for Birch Grove. Um, but I do want to remind folks that, um, just as all of our committees, FFC, Communications, Policy, Tony wants visitors in there. Birch Grove Committee is open to the public. So, um, especially when there's something like these change orders on the agenda, I, I urge for my teammates on the Board of Ed to join those meetings and really listen to the robust conversation, um, that, uh, we're having in regards to it. Also, uh, you know, Katie's done a phenomenal job, along with everybody that's, you know, Damato, JCJ, et cetera, have been doing a really phenomenal job with the constant communication. And, um, not that I want to offer Katie's time for via email and whatever, but Katie has been very, um, efficient and effective and quick to respond to anybody who has questions, uh, in regards to it. Or if there's something that you folks have, please don't hesitate to email me and I can bring those questions to a committee meeting as well. Because as my job as the Board of Ed liaison is to make sure that my teammates on the Board of Ed's voices are heard on the building committee. And then I'm getting, I'm communicating to you the important needs of the building committee to the, to, uh, the Board of Ed. So again, uh, if you have more questions in regards to some of these, please come to our meetings. That would be really great. And, uh, because Eugene and Damato, um, talk in great detail. And we have a budget review every single meeting and a, um, construction review every meeting, which is quite eye-opening. Thank you.
Madhu. Madhu?
Sorry, I just want to point out that we may need a motion to extend beyond ten o'clock. Would you be willing to entertain such a motion?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, you have a weird situation that you have a motion on the table. I think you're in the middle of one.
Yeah.
How are we?
We, we need to deal with this one and then we'll do that motion immediately afterwards.
Sorry?
No, that was good. It was good to bring that up. I, I apologize. I just wanted to remind everybody you're right in the middle of one.
Good point. So hold that thought, Madhu. Uh, okay, seeing no other hands, I, I, I just want, before we go to the vote, I, I want to key in on, on what Dana said there that, you know, we, we are, we do have the benefit of having a liaison directly to the committee. Uh, and as I'm certain she could tell you, I've done, uh, we, we should lean on that and feel free to make sure that, that we're, we're voicing the questions and concerns we have to her so that she can take them to the committee as well as, uh, the expectations of what information that we as a board feel we need to be getting from that committee. And, uh, since I agree with what you brought up there, Dana, I think that this is a great opportunity for you to use your report to make sure that these things aren't a surprise and that we don't have to go through the entire hundred-page document. We understand what's coming ahead of time. I would also, you know, look to, to Katie and, and just kind of be anticipating our, our heartfelt invitation uh, to, to come to another one of these meetings when another packet like this is on its way. That being said, if there are any other, uh, statements to have before we vote, seeing nothing, I will take a vote on the motion. Please signify your preference by an eye or a nay or extension when your name is called. Jacob?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Ms. Griffin?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. Uh, that motion passes. Uh, I will now entertain a motion to extend the Board of Education Meeting past ten.
I make a mo- Madhu, Renu, and Talon, make a motion that we extend the board meeting past ten.
Jacob Mari, second.
Any discussion? Seeing only Dana's hand up, which I assume is from the last one. Please, we will go to a vote. Please signify your preference again by an eye or a nay or an extension when your name is called. Jacob?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Ms. Griffin?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. Congratulations. We can keep talking.
Excellent, because we have K two B to go to.
We do.
K two B, um, see the AIA G seven O two, unsuitable soils document, um, and certificate of payment, it is attached. This is part of the, uh, unsuitable soils process that, um, the Birch Grove Project is also going. There's a separate committee for this, um, to handle the issue. And, uh, we do have a require, requirement with very specific language, um, that needs to be put in front of the board. That specific language is motion to certify the completion, substantially complete of project number one forty-two, zero zero eight-five for code violation for unsuitable soils for the Birch Grove Primary School. If you are able to take a look at the packet, um, at the end of the packet, just prior to the town council's, uh, minutes, uh, you'll see that, um, there is information about the unsuitable soils. Uh, it is the form referenced there, the seven O two. Um, and so you're essentially authorizing through that, uh, that motion and acceptance of the, that motion, um, that you're certifying it. So, uh, again, I would hand the floor to either Mr. Holt or Ms. Murray to further comment.
All right, uh, I will entertain a motion.
Jacob Mari, I move to certify the completion, substantially complete of project number one forty-two dash zero zero eight-five for code violation for unsuitable soil at Birch Grove Primary School.
Madhu, Renu, and Talon, second.
Any discussion? All right. Katie, it looks like that one was crystal clear. So, would take the vote then. Please signify your preference with either an eye or a nay or extension when your name is called. Jacob?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. Dr. Willett, that motion passes?
Excellent. All right, thank you. And thanks so much to Ms. Murray for, uh, for being here tonight. Deeply appreciate it. Definitely helped. And then thanks to Mr. Felbin for, um, Mrs. Felbin for also answering. Um, I think at this point in the agenda, uh, Mr. Holt, we are heading towards the public participation.
We are. So, uh, public participation, Jacob, if you would be so kind as to be the timer as well, I would invite anybody from the public to, uh, speak on items, uh, for, that were on this agenda. Get it, you will have a two-minute time limit. Jacob will signify when thirty seconds are left. Uh, please raise your blue hand or if you're on the phone, star nine. Ms. Howard Bender?
Hi, everybody. Kate Howard Bender, one oh three Goose Lane. Um, I think you can hear me, yes?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, hey, first of all, I want to say nicely done with this meeting tonight, Tony. It was a real conversations tonight. Nicely done. Uh, Dr. Willett, uh, I'd like to thank you for forging ahead with the most important work of educating, um, our town um, and our, our community about equity and diversity for facilitating the workshop with Dr. Cooper and all of your efforts to ensure all voices and perspectives are heard and, and included in our little town. Open choice is kind of a, uh, aspect of this. I'm fairly sure that there are existing presentations already. So, um, maybe, maybe you can just find one of those to give to the board members that don't know much about it. Um, this open choice is a wonderful longstanding program and it's in alignment with, uh, Board Goal Number Four. So that's a happy thing. Um, in my opinion, it's not just the job of the schools to disaggregate and ensure equity in our town. So I would recommend that we all work together to ban progress from all of our representatives. Um, regarding Honeywell, as a interested resident, I'd like public conversations to happen in the public. It's just my preference. Um, Ms. Murray and Ms. Felbin and Dr. Willett, uh, thank you for all your efforts and the rest of the committee's efforts to ensure that Birch Grove is built with due diligence. Um, I, and you mentioned that the, the Birch Groves are, uh, open to the public and, um, so we can all go to those. That's great. Um, comment, a budget is a moral document and it's the manifestation of the community's values. It is high time the members of the Board of Education looked out for the needs of the students first. Um, I actually have a specific question. Um, one of the reasons that in-person education has been cited as the best option for children is so that kids can have access to the various supports at schools. Could you please speak to the multitude of resources that are available to students during this particular school year, Dr. Willett? What is missing from this infrastructure as we go into budget season? I'm sure that the Board of Education would be interested in knowing that. Thank you all. Be well.
Thank you, Ms. Howard Bender. Uh, Ms. Udykic?
Hey, everybody. Um, I just honestly wanted just to, um, I think Dr. Willett mentioned it earlier about the staff of the schools during all these times. And I just want to echo that. I don't think we give our staff, um, enough praise in general, but especially right now. The paraprofessionals and the staff, um, have a couple of my kids right now learning remotely and I see the amount of work of them handling the kids inside the classroom and at home. Excuse me, that's my dog, if you can hear her. Um, I just wanted to give them credit and just recognize everybody. And also, Tony, I think you did a great job being thrown in there last minute to chair the meeting. You did fantastic. And I think Katie already dropped off. She's an awesome cheerperson for Birch Grove. She's a wealth of information and I think everybody's very lucky to have her as a volunteer. And Dr. Willett, you do wonderful too. Thank you.
All right. Uh, anybody else? Give you just a few more seconds to, to raise your hand. Again, if you'd like to speak, raise your blue hand or if you're on the call, start. Raise your blue hand or if you are on the call, star nine.
Could you tell folks how to go to the subcommittee meetings?
Sorry?
Could you tell folks how to find the subcommittee meetings if they wanted to attend them?
Nope, absolutely. Again, if you go to the Board of Education website, you will see the committees listed on the side there. Each of those committees has their agenda, which are posted, as well as the minutes which are posted afterwards. They are currently Zoom meetings and I would highly recommend participation. Like you've heard a few times in this, the subcommittees are where, I'll use the phrase again, but where a lot of the heavy lifting is done, where a lot of the discussions that you would expect to hear is to figuring out how we do this, those happen there. So, please feel free to attend and feel free to ask the questions and open discussion concerning this. All right, that being said, Dr. Willett, let's go to points of information. Would you like to address?
Yeah, I just, Ms. Howard Bender's, you know, request about, you know, what we need. And I would say that an excellent opportunity to get a good sense of that from all of our educational professionals and experts, you know, in the district that are cost center managers, I would encourage everyone to engage in that January 4th workshop. You know, they're going to do an excellent job of giving people a good sense of how all of the educational operations are going along, you know. Again, both from a budgetary standpoint and just kind of getting to know your school system standpoint. So, that's a real great opportunity. And rather than kind of go on and on here, I would suggest that people attend that workshop. I think they'll find it very, very useful. And we will be putting out a registration for it this year. Normally, you can just kind of show up. This year, just so we can make those Zoom rooms work well, we're just going to ask people to pick which rooms they'd like to go into and we'll make sure they're ready to go for that night.
Yes, so just kind of getting back to my question from earlier. How is it that we are going about recruiting, you know, trying to, you know, acquire, you know, talent?
So, we have a series of ways that we do that. A lot of times, you know, we will, from the administrative standpoint, when we're starting to look for a position that's on the horizon, you know, we reach out to our professional networks. There are sites in the state of Connecticut that you publish to. We also do internal networking to see if we can cast the net wide and encourage people both to engage through CTREAP, which is one of those sites, as well as, you know, as doing a kind of sweep of the 169 districts with the admin that we know many of them have been in these other places. And so, we do try to recruit talent from many areas and encourage them to apply. And then, of course, we have an equitable process for those applications and a very defined process for interviewing and hiring. We're also looking to become involved with the teacher residency program. And that is a program specifically designed to help districts increase their minority applicants. And we're excited about that. I think that's going to make a difference for this area too. And, you know, we are becoming partners and engaging in that in the next year or two as well so we can try to get as many and as broad of a range of applicants as we can. And I'm enthusiastic about it.
Just one point for myself to, you know, I had the opportunity to listen to the presentation on the talk about race and schooling. Can honestly say I was quite impressed, not only by the presentation that Dr. Cooper put on, but also the way that very difficult subjects were addressed. I'm excited to see how these conversations continue and not just about that topic, but also about the myriad of topics that are facing our districts that we're going to have to face. I would recommend, I would strongly suggest that everybody take this opportunity to learn, to advance in all of these subjects so that when we enter budget conversations, when we enter curriculum conversations, when we enter policy conversations, those conversations are peppered with good knowledge and diverse opinions. That being said, Dr. Willett, let's move on to, oh, sorry, Dana, I saw your...
Sorry, I have a quick one. I'll try to make it snappy. So, really quick, and I know that you said where to find the subcommittee information, Tony, I just wanted to kind of, to reiterate that. So, it's on the town website, the Talon Public Schools website. You'll click Talon Public Schools and then you'll click Boards of Education. Under Board of Education, you'll have the actual meeting agendas and meeting minutes for the actual board meetings. And then, below that is each different subcommittee. And as Tony said, the minutes are there, but also every meeting scheduled, even special meetings, and they are Zoom, so you can get that. Very important coming up in a budget season on that very same website. You go to Talon Public Schools Board of Education, very fire right next to the DPS television tag. You'll see Budget and then it's the Budget Overview page where there's Budget Documents, other useful documents, Budget Workshops, FAQs, and to submit a question. Thank you, Dr. Willett, you're fast.
I'm doing my Van Nuys white.
That's fantastic. I was like, my screen was flicking. But anyways, that's there. So, those are very important resources for our community to access. And then, the other thing that I would say is for folks that are not on the e-blast or the text blast, for whether it's Talon Public Schools or if it's the Town e-blast, contact the Board of Education Office, contact the town, find out how to get on those e-blasts because there's so much information that Dr. Willett sends via those texts and emails, as well as Mr. Rosen from the town side. Specifically, you know, COVID updates, et cetera. But this, you know, the presentation that they had last week about diversity in the schools and such, that was an e-blast and a text blast so people can be involved. So, if you're not on those blasts, here's some, and here's some resources and ways for you to get on there. So, thank you, Dr. Willett. But it's so important that our entire community is involved in regards to not just budget season, not just COVID, I hate to say COVID season, COVID year, just overall to continue to improve our community and have the whole voice be heard. So, I just want to make sure people have those resources. And please, if you go to Talon Public Schools and email the Board of Ed, you can actually just email us as a total group versus a silo of one person versus the other. And, you know, it's nice to get feedback from a diverse group.
All right, man.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Willett. I put you on the spot in that and you executed that very well. Thank you.
No problem.
Oh, thank you. And, you know, just to tie into that, the internet and the World Wide Web have brought a plethora of blessings, but they have also brought the opportunity for misinformation to travel very quickly. So, I would strongly recommend when you have questions or when you want to learn, the website gives you the directions on how to get to the information quickly and accurately. So, I would start there, please. All right, Dr. Willett, future?
Yes, future agenda items. As you know, you know, we're looking at things, doing more instructional rounds, doing more opportunities for conversations about regionalization, cultural responsive education. Now, we've added open choice, of course, here's a future agenda item. And, you know, we're doing, of course, more curriculum presentations. I think you know, you've all seen that the curriculum committee is working on prepping and having the science and math and various other entities also come before the board to do presentations, much as our excellent ELA supervisor did, Barbara Daly Burns, a week or so ago. So, these are just some of the great things to look forward to.
New business?
I don't see any direct new business. After this, we are moving into, just as a friendly reminder, executive session. But no new business for myself.
Okay. So, then I will entertain a motion to enter executive session.
Jacob Murray, I move to enter executive session to discuss a confidential student matter.
Rainey B. Saw, second?
Any discussion? All right, then please signify your preference with either an aye or a nay or abstention when your name is called. Jacob?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Ms. Griffin? Medu?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. I would like to thank the public that have attended. We are going to have to close the room as we enter executive session.